I can. I'm hearing you vibrating, but maybe, maybe. I'll tell you, that was different. It did, because I started looking. Reminds me I gotta silence my phone.
No.
You know, because I'm going, well, you can't be mine. I didn't silence it yet.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, please join us. Is it gonna be on the front cover? The cheese. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us at the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us at the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, which to be called to order today at six, I don't know, we got six oh three, we got six oh two. The clocks are off. We'll go with the six oh two. Seems better. Madam Clerk, may you please take roll call?
Yes, Asen Ahmad.
Present.
Moby Dun.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Absent.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Asan Saab.
Present.
And Wintel Absent, Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
You're.
Today to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we're gonna have Angela Venegas.
The flag of the United States of America, and it's to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Venegas. What are you doing? What are you doing? What are you doing? Gotta run the meeting here. You do.
All right, here, you guys can have more.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
The Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agenda for the regular meeting of August 12th, 25 is submitted.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by, can I get somebody?
Support.
Motion made seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
If we can add to the agenda, the agreement that was sent to you today between Dearborn Heights and Garden City regarding the program.
Okay, well, that'd be under Madam Clerk, would you say, 11, no, ordinance and resolutions, let's go.
Nine.
Nine J? Nine J? Okay, we're gonna add nine J. Okay, gonna call it, uh, Nine City. Sorry, or Dearborn Heights, probably. Any other discussion? Councilman Saab, can you amend your motion to allow nine J on here?
I do, I amended to allow, uh, to add the agreement between Dearborn Heights and Garden City as nine J.
Councilwoman Breyer, will you allow?
I will second, yes.
Do you second it? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is the minutes of the regular meeting of July 22nd, 2025.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I moved that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the regular meeting of July 22nd, 2025 as outlined in four.
Second.
Made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have four B, minutes of the special meeting of July 29th, 2025.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the special meeting of July 29th, 2025 as outlined in four dash B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have public hearings and public comments. That's since we ever got here in a long time.
Council Chair, that to the record, Mr. Coniston's here.
Madam Clerk, please set the record that Councilman Coniston is here present with us here today. Welcome, Councilman Coniston.
Thank you, Council Chair, P. Dun.
All right.
Hello.
Yes, for an additional minute?
I did. I hope to be quicker than that.
Okay.
Real quick, moving to item eight A, I wanted to draw for public attention to this item, what the Charter states regarding warrants versus using a check as a warrant. Um, and if that's the case, and we follow the Charter, and we go to warrant documents, not only will we be more efficient and streamline the workload, and if our deputy comptroller is here, I spoke with him and he agrees, uh, we're already doing a warrant document, um, report, which is generated out of BSNA, which has all the information that's required by the Charter and required to prove for review by the mayor, the comptroller, or clerk, and the treasurer. It would save all the time of having to go through every single check. So again, this is becoming more efficient if we utilize BSNA to its fullest capabilities. Um, so with that being said, the treasurer is the one, according to the Charter, that, and that would be, let me see, eight point nine talks about the warrants, but there's a section, I'm gonna say it's five point three, hang on, nope, five point six duties of the treasurer, where there's my responsibility to manage the depositories, right, the bank accounts. So therefore, this request should come from me to you, and historically always has, but you don't see that happening today. But what I really wanna focus on is the issuing of checks like we do now. We really need to move away and become more efficient, like I said, and streamline, and would be following what the Charter has clearly illustrated to us what is needed, what is required to be in compliance with that Charter, and that's by doing a warrant report, like I said, out of, generated out of BSNA. We're already doing it, by the way, like I said, we're doing it with the ACH payments. Really easy, going through that document, that report really quick, has everything I need, including the general ledger number, uh, everything's there, and the vendor. But, you know, right now, the way we're doing checks is very old school, very slow, very inefficient, and I think we can do better. I'm sure our department heads would agree, because sometimes they're waiting for a while for checks, and being held up, whatever the case may be, because people are busy, whatever it may be, I don't know. But I want to bring that to your attention, and would like to see the city move in a progressive manner on becoming more efficient and streamlining this process. And, uh, Deputy Comptroller? I know you just walked in. I don't know if you wanna add something. Um, I shared with you today, I'm sorry, it's fly inside you, but if you wanna come on over, um, we talked about this, we're both in agreement that this is a direction we really wanna see.
We can have these discussions when we get to that point.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Hey, do ma'am, I guess for an additional two minutes, I will give you that.
Uh, my name is Angela Venegas, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. There's a few things I wanna talk about that are in the agenda. The first one is 10A, the petition for the unauthorized disclosure of minors info with the DC seven dance club. I just don't understand what they're asking for in this petition. They've met with the mayor, they've met with the police department, they've come before council, they've spoke with the clerk, there's been an investigation, there was a police release on July 30th. They can't find anything wrong. This was simply just human error. It's just something that's happened, and I'm all about kids and their safety and everything. But I just, I don't understand what they want at this point. You guys have offered them solutions. I think you guys are now taking the steps so that something like this doesn't happen again. I just don't understand why this is on the agenda. I know they have a right to do a petition, but I just don't understand what they're petitioning for. It's been told, you know, within 24 hours, it was taken off. Everything that they're asking for has been talked about in the council meeting. So I just don't feel like this should even be on the agenda. If anything, maybe you guys take it to a study session or to the administration. I just don't understand what they want at this point. And then I wanna talk about 11A, the Airbnb's, and you guys are gonna be surprised, but I do not think that you guys should say yes to this tonight. And the biggest problem is, there's still no enforcement. Who's going to enforce this? Ordinance is done Monday through Friday, done by 4:30. Our police department, we all know it, it's no knowledge, and anybody doesn't know is shorthanded. Who, who's gonna enforce this? Does anybody, has that been disclosed? Does anybody know who's gonna enforce this?
No, and I don't, and if I had to give my opinion on this one, I do like it. I think we can take it to a first reading instead of a second, and we need to increase the fines on it.
Well, they have the fine now at a thousand dollars.
Yeah, we need, yeah, it needs to be at least a $5,000 fine if you violate having an Airbnb in Dearborn Heights.
You know, and then my other question is, how many times are they being allowed to violate this? I mean, could it be 30 times? Is it 10 times? Is it five times?
Can you afford $5,000 every time you do it?
Well, not with what, not with what we have at a thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars.
I mean, the one next door to me is getting $350 a day for their Airbnb. So if he runs it for a week, your, your thousand dollar fine is nothing.
Exactly.
And the aggravation that I get to put up with ain't worth a thousand dollars. But, um, and I just wanna know, what are we gonna do? Because a lot of these Airbnbs are out of state. Who's, how are we gonna collect the fines? And if we can't collect the fines, are we gonna put it on their taxes? I mean, there's.
You love it on their taxes.
Yeah, as I said, but there's a lot of things that are written that you guys, I just feel need to add, to protect not only the city, but to protect residents, and to make sure that this gets done. I mean, we've had a shooting at one, we've had where the police were overpowered another one, I've had hookers and whores next door to me. It's no secret. So me, out of anybody, I really want this to pass, but I just feel that there's, the enforcement thing is a, is a big thing for me. And I just think it's a heavy thing to put on our police department right now. Something's gotta be, we gotta, we gotta find a balance here somewhere, take, it's just gotta be talked about.
Yeah, I mean, look, the reality is, it has to fall on the police department. It's gotta go to the police department. It can't go to the ordinance department, has to be solely on the, if.
Well, no, because you're gonna run into position where they're gonna be having a party at one of these places, and you can't send an ordinance officer by themselves. They're gonna be overpowered.
Police department, you know?
Council Chair.
Yeah.
I mean, to be honest, it's gonna be easier to enforce, because everything is listed online. So anything listed online is gonna be ticketed. If somebody for any, like, if you know of anyone, then probably the police department can be involved. But anything listed online, that's gonna be ticketed.
The problem with listing online, though, is there's no addresses. There's just pictures of homes. And we don't even, are we gonna register these Airbnbs? Are we, are even our rental homes registered? Do we even know how many rental homes we have?
We do, we have that number.
So, but these Airbnbs, do we have any idea? We don't know. The only time you know of where we're on this is when we come up and we talk to you guys about it. And according to certain people, that's not a problem here in Dearborn Heights, because there's only a few of us who come up and talk about it, because everybody else is afraid. So.
Well, well, I mean, obviously, you know, the administration's gotta fuck together a more cohesive plan, but the reality is this. Um, I think almost every single person on this body here wants to see it, but I agree. A first reading instead of a second reading before this is passed. Um, and, and, you know, so that we can make some adjustments and changes. But I am gonna keep it on here, and so that we can continue to have those conversations. Madam Clerk, did you wanna say something? I don't.
When we get to that, we'll discuss that, okay?
Yeah, we'll get to another, we'll add another reading to it. We'll make the third the final.
I just, I just think some things need to be tightened up on it, that's all.
I agree with.
Trust me, I want it passed more than anybody. I've been living this hellish nightmare for two years now. So, and, um, I also wanted to bring up, um, why is there like no purchases on the agenda from Amazon? We had 30,000 plus last one, and now there's no Amazon purchases.
We'll tell you that today, Nancy sent us the receipts to everything, and he's constantly still keeping up to date. Every day, he sends all of the council an updated thing, so kudos to Mr. Nancy on that.
And then there was a posting on one of the Dearborn Heights communities this weekend of a resident whose tree, which was on their property, fell, and our DPW department went and cleaned it up. I wanna know who's paying for that, because it shouldn't fall on us. It shouldn't be a burden to us taxpayers. Need to look into that. And I wanted to know if anybody's done an update on the trailer park at Palom and Outer Drive, what's going on with that place? I was by there this weekend, and it's, it's nasty.
I, I, I think, I think I was there about two weeks ago.
And what, what are we doing with it?
I mean, I know that they fixed the issue with like the plumbing and stuff that they're going. I do know that, uh, you know, maybe we can have Roger eventually at the end give us an update on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, um, I need you, Mo, to see what you're gonna do to get that grass cut over there on Beach Daily between Kennedy and, um, Heinz Park. So after they cut it, I can go clean it, so when the kids go to school, safe and got a good, good, good way to go to and from school.
Thank you so much, Ms. Venegas. Um, how you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you have two minutes.
Nancy DeRstapanian, Waverly Street in Dearborn Heights. Uh, my concern, I have a safety issue concern. The Eternal Light at Ford Road and Telegraph, they do wonderful service for our community, and I do appreciate that. I have no complaints against them, but I am concerned about the cars that line up to get their, um, services.
At where?
Ford Road and Telegraph, the Eternal Light at Ford Road and Telegraph.
Oh, yeah, yes, it's, it's closer to Waverly and Telegraph.
That's.
Waverly and.
Waverly and Telegraph, okay.
And I live on Waverly Street. So, um, the cars line up, they start at nine o'clock or earlier. Um, my, and they go from Waverly to Midway to Highland, then they go south to Ford Road and onto Ford Road. They go as far as the cemetery, even sometimes past the cemetery entrance. I've seen a couple times a police car at the end of the line trying to, with his flashers on, trying to let people know that these cars are stopped there, and it's a concern. I've tried to turn right from Highland onto Ford Road. I can't even see if there's traffic coming because of all the line, the cars lined up. So I'm, um, I'm very concerned. I don't want them to not do it. That's a wonderful thing. But I am concerned about the traffic hazard that it presents. I do have a solution proposed for this. Rather than going south on Highland towards Ford Road, could they possibly go the other direction, north on Highland? They have that whole mile before Warren Avenue, and it's a, the same residential street as if they were to go south. But rather than just have the one block south going to Ford Road, they have almost a whole mile going towards Warren Avenue. And I think that would eliminate a lot of the congestion that, um, we have the Ford Road traffic. And this happens three times a week, and it's always lined up, and it's always onto Ford Road. So I'm hoping that, I don't know how you'll do it, um, hopefully they'd be willing to have their, they have volunteers there that direct traffic and, and tell them, you know, when to line up and that sort of thing. So I'm hoping that they would be cooperative as well, and that we can do something about it.
Can you do me a favor?
Yes, sir.
Right underneath you, there's a shelf under, or it's right on top. And I want you to fill that form out, put your information on there, and then hand it over to George, who is our council secretary. And on George, can you get that information, you see the council and the police chief? And then we'll have the police chief have a conversation with them.
Your George?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Might I ask?
Yes.
Oh, you say it's three times a week?
Yes, Tuesday.
Have you talked to the people there?
Not about the traffic situation, no.
That, that might be a good thing to try, too. Let them know what's happening to the residents in the area.
Well, they know that the traffic goes onto Ford Road, because they have volunteers there with vests on directing traffic and that sort of thing.
Just a suggestion.
Okay, I'll try that. Thank you very much.
Fill out that form, ma'am, please, and put your contact information. We'll send her over to the police chief. We'll, we'll have someone from the police department.
Jada, thank you.
How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you have two minutes.
Chastity Townsend, Licken Boulevard. I'm here tonight to, um, request that you do approve Eliana Hussein for item eight B for the Women and Girls Commission. Um, we are short by two people to actually get moving. And we did meet just to kinda introduce ourselves to one another. We have a lot of great ideas and things we wanna do, and fundraising we wanna do. So, um, I just request that you approve Eliana Hussein to that commission. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
Mike Blackburn, Arnold Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, this is about nine G, about the procurement policy. I would ask that you move that to a study session. There's a few things in there that are concerning to me. And one of the things that are concerning is prior to this administration, department heads always had to go to city council to authorize to go out for bids before you, we, before they went out for bids. That way you can ask that the money is budgeted for. This administration went out for bids. You guys do nothing about it. Time and money was wasted for doing that if you guys shoot down the bid proposal, because we don't have the money. Bids were approved, bids went out, that were not, um, they weren't budgeted for. We ate, the city ate through its, uh, fund balance, and we can't have this fund balance be eaten up every single year. Um, there's other things in there I don't like, but I think department heads should have to get council to authorize them to go out for bids, so council can make sure that the money is budgeted for, and that we're not taken out of the fund balance, and that's it.
O'Lyons.
Yes, with the show two.
You have an additional two minutes, and so I honor that for you.
Thank you. I hope, I will not take four minutes. Uh, Zohair Abdalha, 354 Rosemary. Uh, I have a question for the treasurer, actually. It's an old story, but, uh, something came up, and, uh, that is very disturbing. I wanna ask you to tell the city council, Zida Cook, how she got paid if somebody forged your signature on those checks, and why the invoices of 900 and 1350 have the same serial number. Two invoices for two different things have the same serial number. Would you please explain this? Because last meeting, you were going to talk about it, but I did not have the study session.
I did have it ready. Thank you. All right, so, um, I just reviewed everything again. I did have everything ready as requested. There were a total of, well, first of all, there was one check originally issued that included the $900 and a $350 invoice. By the way, it's the same invoice number, one invoice. Uh, one check was issued, check number 187385. I did not sign that one. I refused to sign it, because it did not come before the city council was required, and therefore sent it back, and it was voided. Okay? Then it was reissued again, this time 187386, 187387. Uh, 386 was for $1,350, 387 was $900. Again, one invoice, one invoice, split into two checks. I did not sign those checks, because I said one invoice. Why are you splitting it into two checks? I didn't understand. Now, I did go to Comerica, and they're researching it. This happened March 29th, 2023. So I don't have the online banking to pull those copies of the checks. I can't see those. So I do have Comerica researching that, but I did not sign those. And that's all the information that I have that I can bring to you regarding this question.
Question for you, Madam, uh, Treasurer.
Of course.
Did you report this to the authorities?
I did, yes.
You should probably reach out to the FBI and Mission State Police.
All right, thank you.
The second issue, there are, uh, credit cards, petty cash credit cards, I think, issued to the mayor. Their limit is $1,400, and those are for use in case, you know, there is emergency, there is something need to be done. It came to my attention that the mayor used them in three places, in Milwaukee twice, and in Tennessee once. Now, did the mayor tell the city council what he did in Milwaukee for the city and in Tennessee? Did he submit, uh, any document to provide this, the, the city council or the controller? What kind of business he was doing in those two states benefiting us, benefiting the residents? If not, that is misconduct definitely by using a credit card he's not supposed to use for personal, uh, travel or personal issues. So I would like you to have the treasurer give you those documents and look at them. I don't know if she gave them to you, but when I was in the treasurer department, for heaven's sakes, I used miles from the credit card, if you remember, to buy things for the treasury department. And God bless, and Palatko wants to do forensic audit on me, because it exceeded $1,500. So I hope that you do look into it, because, uh, we don't know where other things happened and who got paid in different ways. Since the treasurer is not signing any of those, uh, I would see if her signature was forged on some of the checks. Thank you.
Council Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Council Chair. Uh, Mr. Zohair Abdalha, I did reach out to the, the mayor's office, and, uh, those charges were in Lansing, Hilton Hotel. Basically, Mr. Deep had to take mandatory training for the CDBG disaster recovery training. Uh, so basically, he stayed at the Hilton, but the Hilton probably main office is in Milwaukee, so.
Even if Mr. Alideep did do those, you know, that basically credit card was issued to the mayor.
Correct.
Okay, not for anybody else.
Right.
That's one thing. Second, did Mr. Alideep submit, uh, did he document to show that what he did? I didn't know that Mr. Alideep was the one who used it in any.
I mean, I just got this email.
In any case, he should either sign, you know, submit expense sheet on monthly basis or whenever he goes on travel. That is normal practice in any company, in any municipality, that when you use city money, you fill expense sheet, telling the controller, this is what I did, this is what I spent, I need reimbursement, or, uh, the city council approved the expenses. If they didn't, that is not good practice. And when they issue credit card for a person for a reason, not for anybody else to use it.
No, no, I do agree, and even, um, you know, my second question to them was, why not the CDBG, uh, pay for the training? Since it's a CDBG training.
And we have money in the city.
Yeah, so that was my.
You have lots of money in the CDBG, and I don't think, uh, you know, they would object to use that money.
I don't know, maybe Mariana wants to. Thank you. Are you done, Mr. Zoh?
I'm done.
Go on.
So as you recall, the CDBG disaster recovery is for the floods that happened in 2021. Uh, so that is not part of the regular CDBG housing projects at all. It has always been underwater. It's for water projects, and Mr. Deep is the one who has been managing those projects. So again, this was a mandatory request from CDBGDR for anyone that has the awards to attend the training. The only expense was for the hotel, so that's what's there. Uh, it happened literally last week, so this isn't something that we've been hiding. It just happened, the invoice just came from the bank. It's regular procedure, the information had been provided to the treasurer as soon as I got the email. So again, we were waiting for the, the credit card statement to come through. It just happened all today.
I think Rihanna just, uh, the practice here, is it supposed to go, come out of the mayor's office, or is it supposed to come from somewhere else?
Mr. Deep doesn't have a credit card, so not every director has credit cards. So grants and such do fall under the mayor's department, so we use that credit card. As you know, certain vendors don't accept, um, ACHs or different things like that for reservations for hotels. So that is why the mayor's credit card was used. It was an authorized expense for one of the directors to attend the mandatory training.
Thank you very much.
Anyone, before I let you go, I see you have one on Zoom.
Sure.
And then, and then I'll get to you. I have a Jim Hunsaker.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jim Hunsaker. I live on Detroit Street between Colgate and Lehigh. And the corner house on, uh, Detroit Street, right at Colgate, 4103 is the address, is an Airbnb. Something definitely needs to be done about this. The people that show up here for these are showing up on a Friday, Saturday, sometimes on Sunday, and they're gone by the time you, anybody from ordinance is able to come around. So the problem is, they're parking in my driveway, which is two doors down, telling me it's okay, I'm at, I'm with the party. It's not okay. And then when they do pull out of my driveway, they're still on the street, parked halfway in my driveway, and telling me it's okay. I understand it's okay. They park on the city, uh, streets in front of anybody's house they possibly can, that's fine. But when they're blocking my driveway for me to be able to get in and out, I think it's. That's fine. But when they're blocking my driveway for me to be able to get in and out, I think it's rather dangerous. Uh, the whole point of this is they're getting wild, loud, and causing problems in the neighborhoods.
Jim, thank you so much for sharing that with us. I want you to know, you know, and we've said this to the administration, uh. You know, constantly, and nobody is coming to uh, to have an Airbnb in Dearborn Heights because they want to go to a museum. Or they're here to visit a, a family member that's in a hospital in Dearborn Heights because we have no hospitals or museums. The reality is they're using it because they know they're small and expensive and they're being taken advantage of. And, and so I share your frustration. I'm sorry that is happening. And we are going to hopefully put the right, you know, policies and procedures and we're going to enforce them. Uh, because this is something I feel like Dearborn Heights is being taken advantage of. I can tell you, I'm somebody that doesn't like to be taken advantage of.
And neither am I, and I hope and look forward to positive results.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
God bless you.
You too.
Anyone else in the audience or on Zoom? Go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You have two minutes.
Renee Myrna, Dearborn Heights, Anne Apple Street. Um, first of all, I want to say I'm very proud of. The residents. I had been praying for the city and I was praying specifically for. People that can follow the money to rise up. And there seems to be a plethora of these people that are watching the money of Dearborn Heights and. Where it's going so that we can finally be accountable to where all the money's going. Second of all, um, the thing that bothered me, I've been watching on Zoom when I'm not here and the thing that, that. Bother me and I, and I could be wrong, but it seems to me that the city council stated. And when they're approving these things, that if it's not attached to us, I don't know if it is attached to a number, attached to a something. That you're not going to approve it. And from what I understand, there's blanket approvals on things that weren't attached to stuff. And so that's concerning to me. I don't know the language. I don't know how to explain it. But all I know is I remember the city council saying, if it's not attached to a. Claim number or whatever it's called, then you're not going to approve it. But from what I've seen in the last couple of meetings, some things were approved that weren't attached. So. You know, if you can explain it, that's fine. But um, these are things I'm observing. I just want to tell you, I'm still praying for you guys, you know. And, and congratulations on the election for Councilman Chair. And I'm going to pray for you guys extra hard now.
Thank you so much. God bless you. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else on Zoom? Okay, Mr. Cooper, you have unlimited time to speak. I think I know why you're speaking. Um, but I will let you go ahead and speak to the best of your, your ability and your.
David Cooper, Director of Innovation Technology for the city of Dearborn Heights.
Wow.
Um. Um. Prior meeting that I was not able to attend for, for uh various reasons. Um, I want to say first that my investigation completely aligned uh with the city clerk. Uh, everything that she reported, um, but also during that.
What, what, what is it that?
Incident.
Um, sure, the uh, potential release of the information. How it went through, how she dictated how, what order it went through, who approved the passage. Everything there was, it was documented. So exactly what she said about um documents being uploaded. The comptroller's office uploading and approving them, how it goes to the mayor's office or designated. Uh, gets approved, uh, and then goes to the city clerk. Okay, the, in the platform Civic Rec, I'm sorry, not Civic Rec, Civic Clerk. Um, it is designed to go to the, the clerk's office. Um. Technically for an approval, just sets the way that goes, but she doesn't ever really approve everything in there. And historically, it shows one hundred percent. She has never approved anything in that platform. Um, and again, it's just set up so that it gets to uh the clerk's office. Um, when we originally went to the civic clerk, that was when we worked, it was months worth of work. Going through setting it up, that was just the way that was determined would be the best practice to, to follow. Um, it also does show the exact time of uh when the clerk took it down. Um, and then put up uh the new version on there, aligning exactly with what the, the clerk said. You can't, you can't um fake that information. It's not information, anything we can change because it's all metadata on the files that are there. So it all lines up. Um, what I rea- what I really also want to say is during that uh meeting. A certain term was used that for me is a red alarm, the people in my field and on a restaurant, the, the term data breach was used. Okay, um, we did not have a data breach. Okay, our securities that were put into place did not allow any intruder into our information. Um, because that's a red flag for someone like me because of potential access to BSNA, access to credit card information, anything like that. That, that is improper term to, to use into that. Um, and I want, I want the community to know that we did not have a data breach. Their, for their credit card information, early information to BSNA, because again, that is our, our heart blood of information uh is one hundred percent safe. So for me, that is a, I want to make sure uh that is stated and that's what I'm, part of what I'm up here for.
Can you, can you walk me through the steps of how this happened? Uh, IT Director, I'm sure you follow the timeline. What, what happened here?
Um, so I can tell you that it showed the time that uh the deputy comptroller created the claims. It shows the time that the deputy comptroller uploaded the claims. It shows a timeline that the um, the deputy comptroller at the time was acting as the, as the comptroller. Approved the claims. Once it's approved, it then goes over to uh the mayor's office. Um, the mayor's office has uh a couple of people that can approve. The, the whatever gets to them because it's motions, claims and whatnot. Um, the executive secretary approved, it should, again, it shows it there. Uh, she approved the, the claim. Once it's from there, again, it goes to the, the clerk's office. And it stays there. There's not another, technically in the system, there's an approval, but she doesn't ever approve anything. Uh, in there because it's just again to get there.
For publication.
Yep, so that George can then, Georgia can do what she needs to do to get it and rearrange it on, on the list and everything.
Just for full disclosure, the mayor, the mayor was saying that I had the final approval. That's not true.
I, I could, I could say you don't have access to the backend system, you know, at all.
Yeah.
You know, I can say that.
So.
When you're done.
Okay, so, so that's it.
That's, that's, that's what was done.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Constant.
Thank you. So you make a good point. No data was breached, no account number, no credit card numbers. Information came in and it was posted. Um. Maybe it, it, it shouldn't have, but it wasn't.
No intruder got through our system, the securities that we got in place, because that technically was what would classify as a data breach.
And any idea how many people looked at it or downloaded it?
Um, I was contacted by the police chief to, to investigate. That is not our data. It's not off our servers, so it's not anything that we track. I contacted um Civic Plus and it is nothing that they also track. They do not track um the downloads or, or anything like that.
So it was up.
And I have that in writing from them and I provided that, uh, that information.
Do, do we know if we had an opinion from an attorney, MMRMA? Did we, did we get anything, Roger, on this? I mean, what, what did they say? Is the city liable? What, what, what are you, what are you thinking here? I mean?
Well, I did look, yes, I did run it by um Attorney, uh, Don DeNolte's firm. We looked at it. We said this is not um, this is not, it, it's a one-time uh situation. Um, the city's not liable. Municipalities have to go to gross negligence, not negligent. And it doesn't, it doesn't meet the standards that would hold the city liable.
Okay, thank you. You did get that in writing?
I did get it in writing.
From who?
Don DeNolte, from Don DeNolte. No.
Can you share that with the council?
Absolutely.
Thank you. When did you get that, if you don't mind me asking?
Right after this happened, I got that opinion.
Please share that with the entire body.
Absolutely. Well, yeah, I want to make sure, keep it you and then.
Yeah, just share it with the body. Okay. Thank you.
And about how, how long was the data uploaded?
Less than twenty-four hours. Exactly, uh, exactly as the clerks said, though.
It was under twenty-four hours, counsel.
But any idea how many hours? I've heard like two or three hours.
Twenty-three hours.
It was posted, I think it was about four, four thirty that day. Um, and the clerk took it down, I believe it was one P M. I don't, I don't.
Twenty-two.
Yeah.
One, one P M.
About one P M the next day.
Okay.
It was taken down.
Thank you. Any other uh comments? Thank you, Mr. Cooper, for your time and all your due diligence things.
Thank you very much.
Very welcome. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none, let's move it over to fund transfers and current claims. Counselor Chair, Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved current claims and ACH wire transfers, six dash one. Through six dash thirty-five, six dash thirty-seven through six dash fifty-three. And six dash fifty-six through six dash seventy as submitted second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussions? I want to uh discuss, I saw today about um. Um. Urban, not urban. Artistic, artistic landscaping. I had a conversation with uh Director Dancy. I asked him to please send us over the um, and, and I want this to be in a backup. So that the residents can see the before and after pictures, but he was able to email it over to all the body. Or I believe he sent it over to me and I was able to share it to the council. I, I don't remember the process. I sent out so many emails today. Uh, but the reality is, uh, we got that information and it seems like we've owed them for quite a few cuts. And so to answer Mrs. Renee, yes, we, we, we received the backup and that's why today it's being approved is because. We, we had the communications and, and really the right thing to do here is to pick up the phone. You have all week to be able to call your directors. I, I called Mr. Deep three, four times today. I called Director Dancy. I contacted the police chief. I called Director McCaffrey. I make those phone calls all throughout the day so that we're not here bickering. The truth is, and, and they've all been able to answer those questions. And so thank you, Director Dancy, for emailing us that and for the audience at home. The entire council received the before and after pictures of, of what they were cutting. Thank you. Counselor Chair. Councilman.
I'm sorry, uh, I think Renee, she meant something different. She said, she meant like everything we're paying off is linked to a budget line. And she's saying that we paid something was not linked, as you requested before from everybody, but I think she's saying that we paid something was not linked to a budget line. I don't recall. Did we?
General, I think.
General. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, but did we do something like? I don't recall like paying something was not linked to a.
I don't, I don't recall that. I don't know.
I don't recall. If you have something, please send it to us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? You want to say something, Councilman?
No, I'm also.
All in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those opposed, the eyes have a motion carries. Next up, we have comptroller's office bid award, Warren Valley Parking Lot Resurfacing.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman.
Can we just?
You need to read.
Let's, let's read the motion. Okay, that's fine. Um, I'm put a more, um, recommend a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council awarded a bid for Warren Valley Parking Lot Resurfacing to.
Blank.
Blank contingent upon the following.
Okay, can I get a second? Second, motion made by Councilman Saab. Second about Councilman Constant, if I may, I had a conversation with Mr. Deep on this today. Uh, I let him know that one, nobody contacted the school and told them, we expect you to pay three hundred and fifteen thousand. Nobody connect, contacted, um, you know, the building tenant and told them you need to pay thirty-three thousand because I contacted both of them. And then the city needs to come up with seven hundred and thirty-four thousand. Look, we just don't have that money. We can't give people raises. We can't come out and say we're going to be paying for this. The reality is, I, I have to kind of agree with Councilman once on something where it says we have to maintain. And I believe that that parking lot doesn't need to be maintained. It doesn't mean we need to come rip up this whole entire floor and say, well, here's a twenty-year fix. The city does not have that financial stability. We're not in that stability to be able to do it. We have no revenue sources. We have no way of saying, we could put more money from our, from our resources, the recreational, to be able to fix this parking lot. I know we're obligated to fix, to maintain it. And the right way to maintain that, uh, and, and Mahdi, I know you want to kind of go in the back and forth and I don't want to. Because I told Mr. Deep.
I had a comment.
Let's have a meeting next week. Let's make sure you can reach out to all these individuals that applied so we don't have to really technically go out for re- rebid and tell them. Price us, all of you price us on resurfacing with the two-inch layover, like kind of like Councilman Saab said. And, and patching up and fixing the spots that they are. We're not saying a half-inch layover. We can go with just a two-inch layover and then you can contact the school and them and say, this is your cost, this is your, and we don't know if the school is still going to agree to it.
Oh, no, I agree. Uh, the motion.
But, but, but let me finish. Here today, you gave a solution on how to pay a million dollars. This, 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 this body has already said, we're not going to pay a million dollars. We're not paying seven hundred and thirty-four thousand. What I can tell you is you could pay five hundred thousand, ask the school to pay a hundred and fifty thousand. And that's, you know, the, the tenant of the building pay, you know, twenty-five, thirty thousand. Guess what? Dearborn Heights ended paying three hundred thousand dollars. That seems a lot more easier than to find a million dollars.
No, and I, I agree.
Put numbers until.
I'm just, I'm giving you.
And.
Yeah, those are all just hypotheticals.
Can I just make one statement? I'm not going to go, I don't want to go back and forth. I agree with you about that. Um. First, uh, the motion was supposed to be contingent, so I did not expect them to agree upfront. But I wanted the council to put something out there to agree. If you don't agree with this uh full resurfacing, a twenty-year.
Not, this is not, no, we said that last meeting.
No, and I agree with you. But the issue I have as the financial representative is. Over the twenty-year period, if you go with um cheaper fixes that last four to five years, you're going to end up paying. Double over a twenty-year period. Now, I understand your current financial situation might deter you from doing a full replacement. I just personally think that over the lifespan of this project, it's better for. The city to invest in a twenty-year fix instead of a four-year fix. Now, the other problem I see with the city is we're kicking the can down the road for a lot of repairs and maintenance. And at some point, we're all going to have to come to the conclusion that we're going to have to repair things to the fullest extent.
And I got to tell you, Mahdi, I do not want to sound arrogant and I don't want to be mean. You may feel that way. But this body up here voted a different way and we were elected to make those decisions.
And I.
Well, hang on. And you said you feel that, you said I feel this way. And so that's why you brought it back. I want you to know that this elected body up here unanimously voted to turn this down, actually six to one was the last vote. And we don't want to kick the can down the road, but unfortunately, we have things like extremely, you know, bad infrastructure. We have things like we want to pay our employees. We have things like, you know, you just got a phone call from an attorney telling you to pay, to, to, you know, for the increase of, 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 of certain unions to pay them. And you said we can't afford it, you know, and so like, let me tell you, we can, we can easily come out and say, let's fix the parking lot. That does not represent, you know, the entire citizens of Dearborn Heights. And so when we make these decisions, we have to make the decision to be financially, even if it takes, you're right, but in five years, we might find a grant. In five years, this next administration might have a grant rate of the sense, we're going to be able to fix this parking lot for only ten thousand dollars. You don't know that. I don't know that. But you can't make the decisions and say, hey, you know what? Let's come out here and, and this is what I think is the best. No, we already made this decision. We asked you to send out a two-inch layover, lay, what's it called?
Layover.
A layover and, 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 and that's it.
Okay, I, I understand. The notion, the notion was, from a financial perspective, the twenty-year cost of whatever you were proposing. Will be about double to triple the value of if you were to just do it all right now. Now, I understand, Counselor Chair, but as a financial representative, I present numbers to you. I'm not saying that I'm right and you better do what I say. I'm saying, here's the numbers, you make the decision.
We did. We made the decision last week.
The, the decision last week did not have the full breakdown of how we're going to pay it and things like that. I just said, hey, here's a million dollars. Then you ask, where's the fund balance? This and that. Instead, I tried making a more detailed descriptive uh motion of what it would take to get this project done. I do agree that the city's in a financial situation where we have to be very tight on money. I just. Saw this project as something that we could do immediately to the fullest extent instead of doing a partial bandage repair. You have the right to turn it down and say, hey, I want something that's half the cost, but will only last about a quarter of the time.
Okay, Mahdi, I want you to know, you put this together and that's great how you came up with the numbers. But you never called the school or the tenant because I called them both and said, what are you talking about? They didn't even know it was going to be out here. Here's this trustee. They said they had no idea.
So the point of the motion is the city council has to approve something so we can get to them and say, hey, the city council approved it. Are you willing to do this? The, the motion says contingent on the following, meaning that if you go to the school or if you go to the bill and tenant and they deny it. You say, okay, they denied it. We can't move forward with this project.
You know, but you know what that's doing? It's wasting more time. These people want to open. They want to open. We, we're losing money.
Counselor Chair.
Counselor Chair. Counselor Chair, if I may, um, uh, just for the record, the five hundred thousand dollar two-inch overlay is actually started, it's under designs. Because we have a lot of potholes that have to be cut and the men and, and, and catch bases that have to be adjusted if you overlay. So we're, it's under designed, the five hundred thousand dollars. I wasn't sure why this thing, this is just a clarification. I didn't put that item. But um, the five hundred, the half million dollar, um, uh, which will be the three fifty, one fifty share is, is um, uh, under designed. It will be sent to the same twelve companies that submitted the bid to price it. So it is, it is underway.
Yeah, but we got to move fast on this. It should, it should have been already sent over because we asked for that last week, two weeks ago.
Initially, initially, we were supposed to rip four inches out all throughout, so the potholes were not identified at each one. So now that we're doing an overlay, we have to go back and identify all these things that we need to repair before you put an overlay over them. So it is underway and it's fast tracked and it will be done.
Okay, Mr. Deep, I just, I want to, I don't want to have like a bicker back and forth, but I mean, you spoke on this. We have, we haven't had a city council meeting in fourteen days, sixteen days, right? Sixteen days, we've not had a city council meeting. The last. The last city council meeting, we asked to go over for a two inch layaway, a layover. And now we're here and we're saying, well, we're about to go out for it now. We just lost sixteen days. Twenty-one days, like that's, this is absolutely crazy.
Bids are usually thirty days on the street. We're not doing a rebid. We're doing a redesign. So that's why we're going to go back to the same people that applied and get a price. So by next council meeting, you'll have it. We'll get a number from the twelve people.
Yes, Councilwoman Brian.
Uh, just a suggestion outside the box. We supposedly are giving back or putting in the account for M M R A over seven hundred thousand dollars. Do we have to do that? Could we not use that money and then renegotiate with the school district for the difference?
You know, if we get sued, how are you going to, how are you going to be able to figure that out?
Well, that, that, that's, we're still covered for the other stuff, but that was putting, that was putting extra back in the kitty.
No, that's paying your policy off.
I'm not sure about that, but I do think we should renegotiate with the school district.
The school district is disappointed in this, in this.
No, but we should have voted on this six months ago, not pushed it down the road.
Yeah, why didn't we vote on it?
I don't know.
Because when we asked them, they said we were having private meetings and negotiating on the city's behalf without the mayor and, and, and the city attorney. Those were the discussions that were happening.
Well, Counselor Chair, to be honest, you actually were. There were contracts that were signed with a company that, that has its name in there for amount of four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. The, the Crestwood agreed to pay a quarter of that amount, one hundred and sixty-four thousand. And then they claimed that that company was not negotiated, but they put a bid on a May twenty-first that was approved. And now they did another bid and Crestwood actually approved the contract. I watched their last planning board meeting for another company that they're doing two other buildings for two hundred and sixty-seven thousand to pave our parking lot without any discussion with us. So I think we need to go back and figure out what's happening with that situation.
I, I want to tell you guys, now you, you all stay here, Roger?
I'm, yeah.
Thank you. Let me tell you guys what really happened. I got a phone call from the superintendent and some school board members and said, this is what Crestwood would like to do. There's a huge safety concern issue regarding to the parking lot. They came here not one time while Roger was here, not two times while Roger was here, three times while Roger was here, and on the fourth time, Roger wanted to fight, one of the, wanted to fight the president of the school board and said, beat me outside. And so the reality is, the Crestwood School District has said, no, we're still going to use the parking lot. You guys are going to have to pay for it and we're not, we're not going to do it. And that's not this body's fault.
I, I'm correcting your narrative, Counselor Chair. You're absolutely wrong. This was started in March and April, the negotiations in May. Bid was put out May twenty-first. I knew nothing about this. I was alerted by Crestwood. When they came to the meeting, you already had an agreement, Counselor Chair, and administration and the mayor negotiates, not the city council first. You vote on, on the issue when it comes to you and you review the contract. You don't negotiate, then vote on your own contract. That's what I pointed out, which was wrong.
Thank you. What, Mr. Farina, thank you, Mr. Farina. Uh, what I want you to know is Roger's actually mistaken. The, the building tenant, Mr. Esau.
Emailed us.
Emailed the city council this, we had no idea. What are you talking about? Somebody just randomly emails me. I'm supposed to tell them, no, 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 no. Email only Roger and the mayor? I can't, I can't control that. But Mr. Farina is making it like he right now, he said the school board made a vote on, on approving two hundred and seventy-five thousand. It's not true. Yeah, I know it didn't happen. Here, here's the vice president of the school board. But anyways, let's, we're not going to go back and forth. I want to have this one tabled, if that's okay with Councilman Saab. Seconded by Councilman Constant. Mr. Deep, please bring this back as a two inch layover and let's move on from this problem, please. I mean, this is my opinion. I'll, I'll take the rest unless you guys want to take a vote.
I will table this.
I have a lot to handle it.
I want to table and bring it back with a, uh, with a two inch overlay.
Counselor Chair. That would be, if they have something next couple of days, we can even meet next week just to expedite the.
Yeah, let's see if you can do that. Thank you so much. Uh, is anyone else have any discussion on this?
That would, that would be to refer back for a good, or language on a two inch layover.
Okay, let's refer this back to you, Councilman Saab. Are you okay with that? Councilman Constant, you second that? Yes. Okay, we're going to refer this back to the administration. All in favor, please state aye.
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 No.
Madam Clerk, please take your call.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Brier?
No, because we knew in advance that Mr. Esau said it can't open until it's done. And we pushed it into the school year starting and it's not.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Asan Saab?
Yes.
Moby Doom?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is Controller's Bid Award Street Pavement Program Contract twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council awarded the bid for the twenty twenty-five uh, dash twenty twenty-seven Street Pavement Program Contract to A and G Construction as the lowest bidder. And I would like to add here to, um, to be sent, once the contract is available to be, uh, brought back to us for final approval, then we can authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city and authorize the mayor and controller or clerk to sign the necessary warrant and treasure to issue the necessary payment out of Major and Locust Street Repairs G L Accounts two oh three dash two oh three dash eight eight zero dot five zero zero and two oh two dash two oh two dash eight eight zero five zero zero as outlined in seven dash P.
Supports.
Motion made by Councilman. Nah, sorry, Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman, uh, Maxwell. Any discussion?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman.
The motion I did it that I'm approving this, uh, but we need to see the contract for final approval before we can, before the mayor or the clerk, uh, sign the contract with, uh, uh, O R D.
Counselor Chair.
You also hear Councilman, I'm also.
Councilman Saab.
When was this bit put out?
I don't know. It was put out, I can tell you the exact date that it was supposed to. Give me one second.
We went out for this bid last year.
Sorry about that. What'd you say?
We went out for bid for this on last year, right?
Uh, it was last year, but then it, uh, was too late in the season, so we, we bid it out this, uh, year.
What, what were the days?
Huh?
What were the dates?
I'm gonna pull up the bid now right now to look at the dates. Give me one minute. Street pavement program.
Seven, ten, twenty-five?
Uh, it's from July eighth, twenty twenty-five to July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
How many responses did you get back?
Uh, on the tally sheet. Five. So on the top of the tally sheet, you have A and G Construction, Junius Mat.
No, I understand. That's the only five that bid this whole project?
Yes.
And you, uh, do you have the backup for the last bid?
I can, do you want me to pick it up right now because?
Yeah, please. Can we push this Councilman, uh, Counselor Chair and come back to it?
You, you want to vote on it later? Or the next, uh?
Put it, uh, the last item, I can pull up the information.
Please.
What are you looking for? I want the first bid from last year.
Here all night.
Madam Clerk, can you help with that? You can find something.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Counselor Chair, I can go ahead and, um, I don't know, is that, uh?
We're going to hold off on that.
Yeah, we'll go as soon as he gets ready. Remember, we did that with that.
Yeah, we can, yeah.
Okay, we can just move on with the.
Yes.
Um, Controller's Office Bid Award Infrastructure Resiliency Plan.
Counselor Chair.
Councilwoman Brier.
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the Infrastructure Resilience Plan to O H M as the most qualified bidder and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. This is a state community development block grant that's C D V G funded project is outlined in nine C.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Brier, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Uh, Counselor Chair.
Yes.
Think if, uh, if Councilwoman Brier doesn't mind, it's the same thing if we can do it just to have a contract too as well, so we can see the final contract before final approval.
Yeah, because none of these have been here have any type of contract before us. It's basically saying approve them and vote, the administration will take care of this, uh, contract and we'll never see what, how much it's going to cost us.
Let's see what Mr. Deep wants.
Well, Counselor Chair, the, this is the C D B G funded project.
Do you ever install it to see the contract?
C D B G.
You are, I know.
But it's C D B G.
Okay.
All right.
And also, um, if I may, I'm going to give one away. Can I? All right. I'd like to give you a little bit of history as to what this and the next item is, is all about, the Comprehensive Master Plan. Uh, due to the federal disaster declaration resulting from the twenty twenty-one funding, uh, flood, the city of Dearborn Heights qualified for federal funding to address the root causes of the Ekor's Creek floods. So working with our Funding Scout, the city applied and received the federal grant to cover corrective work related to the Ekor's Creek flood mitigations. So the grant was assigned to the state of Michigan, the disaster recovery, which is where I was last week, by the way, and that, that's, that was mandatory, was not fun. So, um, the grant was approved by the city council back in twenty twenty-four, accepting the grant. And the staff worked with the state procurement representative to identify the scopes and publicly advertise and indeed all the needed services. So four projects were identified as related to the flood. And the scopes were developed, reviewed and approved by the state representative before we advertised for bidding. So the state rep had to review each one of those projects and, 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 and approve the fund, the advertising. So these projects are, one, R F Q for Bridge Design Services. This is for the, uh, Council, uh, Councilman, um, uh, Winsell. The Hip and Polk Street replacement over the Ekor's Creek. Number two was the R F P for the Shipo Reliant Shipo State Historic Preservation Office Related Work. And three was R F P for Master Planning and Environmental. This is environmental work. Um, the R F Q was for Infrastructure Resiliency Project. These are the four projects. Projects one and two, the bridge design and shippo were already presented to you, to council and got approved three weeks, two meetings ago. Uh, the, uh, city council and the state procurement representative now are ready for award, to award these projects. Projects number three and four, which are in front of you today, numbers D, C and D, um, are pending your approval. So they will go to the state after you approve them for funding purposes and release. So the every, every part of those scopes and, and, and the, uh, selection is, has to be pre-approved by the state to pay eighty percent of it. So please note that because of the D R funding, disaster recovery of this work, the planning efforts under this scope, the planning, the master planning effort are related to the environmental portion. They're not what we all think of a master plan like, you know, the business, meaning that it does not cover the citywide land use or the zoning modifications which we'll need. Now, the outcome of this project will, will be used when we do our major master plan for the city of Dearborn Heights. And this will reduce, this effort will reduce the cost of their, of our master plan. And our, um, uh, grant, uh, I mean, uh, scout is out looking for funding to do the big city master plan. But these two projects are the, related only to the disaster recovery, the D R portion, which is the, which is the, what the grant is for. So that's, that's the history behind the infrastructure resiliency. They just wanted to make sure that your infrastructure will not be, you know, susceptible to other grant, you know, grand flood or the environmental master planning that you are doing what it takes to get things properly done. So these are the two projects before you and, and they're really controlled by, by, by the feds at this point. The R, D R is, you know, Officer Inspector General was, was with me all week last week.
Counselor Chair. Mr. Deep, you were saying the, their state is, uh, going to be signing the contract with them?
No, the state, the state will only, well, they want you as the recipient. We're, we're paying eighty percent, but yes, so there will be a contract and it will be, it will be signed.
Drafted by us or by the state?
No, the form of agreement is, I use, I use, uh, this gentleman's form, yes.
So, yeah, I mean, we're approving this today, but we just need to see the contract too before.
Yeah, before we release it.
Before you release it. By the way, in any scenario, when there's a contract, city council makes that, oversees that contract.
If I may, counsel, in, in previous life, what we used to do, we put the form of agreement in every bid. So the actual contract that the contractors expect, expected to sign, I worked with this gentleman, so we have a, two forms of agreement. One for professional services, you know, engineering, architectural, and one for construction. These forms of agreements are part of the bid, so the, the companies looking at the projects will say yea or nay. If they disagree to anything, we just don't award them. You know, and, 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 and I have no problem you reviewing it, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Woman Brier.
Okay, we've, we've been trying to get some of this flooding stuff taken care of since the flood of twenty-one. In the last two days, I visited a home where one of the ladies who's in line to have her head, her house purchased. Um, she was hit by a car on telegraph and died.
Okay.
And her family, her son is now in the home. This is at the southwest corner of Banner and Hanover. And she's been waiting patiently for two, three years. This was approved. This stuff is usually done in that manner by C B D G.
So, so this is complicated.
Not doing any purchasing of any home.
No, but this is still, the C B G operates in a certain manner to state and that's the normal way.
Disaster recovery. So the feds, this is federal money. They gave them to the C D B G and they created up after the flood a disaster recovery group. The D R, which is what this is, the D R funding is, is very well-defined effort and it's managed like you would not believe. I mean, they look at every penny because of fraud. So they say of almost forty percent goes to fraud, so they really control every step of the process. When you go to advertise, they want to see the advertising. When you select a consultant, even the consultants you have before you tonight, they had a say in it before you, before I even brought it to you. So in this, I was in every meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Deep, for explaining. Any other discussion? Anything else?
That's it.
Is she okay with, uh? Yeah, uh, Councilwoman Brier, are you okay with us still seeing the contract here?
Depends on how long it takes. I don't want to, two weeks.
For one year approval, I'll, uh, contact, uh, O R D and tell them that, uh, we have to get together and get a contract and then it'll be on next council meeting probably.
Thank you.
That's two weeks, maybe.
You want to just approve things without a contract?
I want to get it going. I'm tired of waiting for so many things.
What do you want to do here? I mean, it's your motion. If you don't want to amend it, you don't have to, but I can tell you right now, I can't support something if you're not going to allow us to amend it to say we still, and we're going to, we can approve it with saying we want to see the contract. That's, that's, that's our job.
Is there any way we can see it sooner than two weeks from now?
That's on them.
Counselor Chair, pending, uh, uh, a contract being provided to the council.
Yeah, that's all.
Sounds good. I'll go with that language.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, that's.
That's it. That's all we exactly said, uh, Councilman.
Kinda, yeah.
So Councilman, will you amend your motion?
As Roger stated, pending the contract.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilman, will you second that?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Right, next up, we have seven D.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman, um.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council awarded the bid for the Comprehensive Master and Environmental Resilience Plan to McKenna as the, McKenna?
McKenna.
McKenna?
McKenna.
McKenna.
McKenna?
McKenna.
McKenna as the lowest bidder and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. This is a state community development block grant C D B G funded project as outlined in seven D, uh, per approval to be per, uh, contract being provided, uh, for final approval by council.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Con, Saab? Or Constant? Let's go Councilman Constant. I've been giving him a lot of seconds. Age before beauty. Uh, any discussion on this? Glad we brought some a little bit of laughter in today's chambers. Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Reports from the mayor, city depository update bank documents.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the updating of the city of Dearborn Heights Comerica and Chase sign or cards. The updated sign or cards that are effective immediately should reflect the following. Mayor Belbezzi, City Clerk Lynn Amcino, City Treasurer Lisa A. Hicks, Hicks Clayton, interim Controller, Controller Mehdi Aibaidun, as option in A dash A, eight dash A.
Second.
Motion made by.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad. Hang on one second, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion?
Can we just have this dated to end, uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five? Because of the elections and everything, so things can, it can be bought and be changed.
Well, they have to bring it forward anyway. There's few people. Yeah, it's.
I don't know why you're huffing and puffing. There's no date on here.
I, I know, but it won't get done and what if something happens?
Guys, point of order, point of order, guys. Let's, let's, if there's something that's going on, go through the council.
Yeah, but nobody's.
Counselor Chair. No, go through the council chair, please.
But nobody's holding this up.
And, and Council, Councilwoman Brier, please, I am going to ask that if a council member has, feels a certain way and it's okay to agree to disagree, but let's all also keep it respectful with each other, please. Thank you.
Counselor Chair.
And Councilman, uh, uh, Saab, please go to the council chair.
Hi, I, I can answer that. I mean, it would have to be updated immediately anyway, if, because we will have a new mayor. And so therefore, for anything to progress, that would need to be done and it's done by the treasurer.
But thank you, but this is a.
But you can date it December thirty-first as well, or January, whichever the case may be, but it will be done because it has to be in order to conduct city business, but I do.
Thank you.
But I do just want you to keep in mind what I said earlier, that the need for check signers could be eliminated altogether if we follow the charter.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And guys, I don't think Councilman Saab's asking for anything that's outrageous, he's simply saying that, you know, he just wants it to be dated.
Council chair?
Yes.
I I spoke to the council, I got interrupted by four people. All I asked for was it to have a date on it to December first. Um, I don't need Nancy Breyer or I don't need the treasurer explaining, I asked for this, it's a motion. I don't need nobody to dictate which way they can tell me it's gonna happen or not, it's a simple yes or no.
Well, let's ask Councilman Ahmad, would you like to amend your motion to add a date?
Cause I can. I can amend my motion to be uh dated uh to expire at this uh December thirty first, two thousand and twenty five.
Councilwoman Breyer, will you second that?
No, get somebody else.
I'll second it.
Second, well, well, you can't, she has the second. Councilwoman Breyer?
Huh? Getting a sweater.
I second.
Somebody else can say. Am I allowed to do that? No, because the first motion is on the table. Who is?
I agree, so somebody else can say.
So, we're just gonna add the. Okay, Councilman Constan to also second it. Add December thirty first.
Uh 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 terminate.
Council chair, can I just recommend something? Um, the first meeting in January would be the second week of January, so I would recommend extending it until that date so that they can have claims for that second week in January.
Thank you, Mariana, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, let's go to the second weekend.
But there's, I mean, somebody has to sign. But that's why I wanted to end the thirty first. No, it, yeah, but his term expires, so that's it, but there's you and there's uh Madam Treasurer. Are you need three signature?
Correct, you need the mayor, the clerk, or?
I was expecting that earlier, if I may, what the charter says is the warrant must be signed by the mayor, the comptroller, or the clerk, and the treasurer. The check is not a warrant, that's why I said go to the warrant report that's generated a BSNA which would expedite, expedite and increase your streamline your efficiencies on your um process. You'd get say this quicker and you wouldn't have to worry about this conversation, you wouldn't even have to have it.
Can you give me a quick second here, Miss Madam Treasurer? Madam Clerk, are you saying that December thirty first is sufficient?
For, well, I'm I'm so sorry. If um Bill Bazey is still the mayor at December thirty first, on January first, he no longer will be the mayor.
Correct.
And then he would not be authorized to sign the check.
So, it should end December thirty first.
Then you don't have somebody to sign him on the first. But that time will tell on that one, cuz we don't know. If he's still here on the thirty first, his term will be over on the first.
We could put, or his, Bill Bazey or his successor, or or effective.
Guys, let's just go into December thirty first.
I mean, he, they would have to, if there is somebody appointed, or once it's, you know, elected, then you would have to change that name.
Okay.
I know, but it's not gonna be to the second meeting, I mean, to the second Tuesday, so what would you do be?
Council chair?
You'll have payroll in between too.
Councilman Malowski Maxwell.
Um, I got a suggestion, instead of putting Mayor Bill Bazey, we should just say current mayor of Dearborn Heights.
I don't think you could do that.
You do that? I don't think you can do that because you're changing the name, that's exactly what this is, is you're changing the name.
I mean, it would be whoever the current mayor is.
Can we say Mayor Bill Bazey or current mayor?
No, that's a financial, that's a financial.
Honestly, current mayor, we all know who that will be.
Who's that?
You could, I, I'm sorry.
She's reading.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk is correct, the signer card has to take a name and a license, okay?
Oh.
So, therefore, if you did still go with what I keep saying, referring back to the charter, and you did a warrant report, it says the mayor, the clerk, the or comptroller, and the treasurer, you wouldn't have all this discussion.
Okay, guys, we're we're gonna go with December thirty first, I I think that's the right, that's the safe thing to say and do. Agree? Um, are we all in agreements on this one?
Yes.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad and amended to add December thirty first, two thousand and twenty five, seconded by Councilman Constan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you, guys, thank you for all the help from everybody. Next up, we have commissions on the women and girls appointment.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointment of Elena, saying to the commission on women and girls, term to expire to April, two thousand and twenty seven. This appointment is to replace Zainab Abdullah as outlined in eight dash B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Uh, any discussions?
Council chair?
Yeah.
I'll go ahead.
Uh, Aliana Hussain is awesome. She is somebody that if you know, you know, if you wanna see empowering other women, that that's somebody we should all take notes from. And and she does a really, really good job in her industry and in her business. Uh, she has a great social media contact, and if you guys pay attention, um, she is somebody that Dearborn Heights can really, you know, take, take a lot of notes from and and be coached on it, she may be young, but she's extremely talented, and I think we're about to be really, really excited if this gets passed today, and I think you're gonna do awesome things in Dearborn Heights, not just on this commission, but I think also in the near future.
Why don't we introduce her?
Council chair, I wanna thank the administration for providing the her resume, it's an impressive resume, she's a accomplished young lady, and I think that probably comes because she's half Ahmad, that's why probably.
Yeah.
You might have to recuse yourself after that one. Not related, but I know, I know probably her mom is a, she's an Ahmad, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so welcome to the, welcome to the, hopefully after this is voted on, so uh, thank you for uh, you know, stepping forward and taking part of this. Thank you, council chair.
Yeah, um, interestingly, uh, you know, thank you for coming out to speak before the city council today and 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 request that we support her. Uh, I could tell you right now that I think everybody in the city really likes Aliana Hussain, and so like, it was an easy talk up there for you, so huddles to you guys, and I hope this gets uh passed today, anyone else? Yeah, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, congratulations, welcome aboard. Next up is the planning commission appointment.
Council chair?
Councilman Constan.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur in the mayoral appointment of Ali Ayub, the planning commission term to expire January, two thousand and twenty six. This appointment is to replace Syaf Al Sanad as outlined in eight C.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Constan, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is reports from city official, treasurer explained, two thousand and twenty five summer tax due date extension.
Council chair?
Councilman Saab.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the extension of the summer tax deadline from August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five to August twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five is outlined in nine A.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Maxwell, any any discussion? I will say, um, you know, I've I'm I'm sure like all of you, uh, especially in the Crestwood School District, have received a lot of phone calls about your tax bill. And then you know that the bond is not reflecting everybody's taxes, and everybody's calling me, saying, what the heck's going on here? And I'm pointing my finger, I said, you didn't vote for the Crestwood School bond. But what's gonna happen here is, you're gonna see, you know, better schools, better systems, better uh uh things for our children, which is gonna bring in higher home value. Uh, so, yeah, the rate of inflation and everything went up and so did our taxes, but so did this, uh, so did so did your property. And and I can tell you right now, I think Councilman Ahmad could probably speak a little bit about it, but the the increase of taxes over the state through proposal A, the rate of inflation has went up five percent every year since two thousand and twenty one, and this year went up three percent. Anywhere you go in the state of Michigan, you're gonna see an increase in taxes anywhere. So, I think the treasurer coming forward and saying, let's give a little bit of an extension, uh, I think that is, that's fair. Especially because I got a call and said, hey, like, my my taxes doubled, I can't afford this. Also, I I I can say I like this, cuz we're we're here, we're we're assisting our residents, especially with those that have saw an increase in taxes, especially in the Crestwood School District, which is ultimately almost a nine percent increase.
Council chair?
Councilman?
Thank you for that, council chair, actually, this is uh, it was a discussion between Madam Treasurer, because I think we had uh similar calls, people are calling and, you know, discussing the taxes and the increases, and they need more time, so I called Madam Treasurer, we discussed it, and we came up. Uh, we we had to follow the state and the city charter, so we were able probably to extend another ten days. Uh, but Madam Treasurer, I don't know, I hope we're not causing any like more work or headache for your department when we're doing this. I know it's only ten days, and I know it's, it's a, I think it's a big help for a lot of people, to be honest with you, especially, I mean, there will be no penalty.
Right.
So, I do appreciate the hard work, uh, your staff.
Right, absolutely, and I will tell you, uh, the treasurer's office staff is working extremely hard. We've been short-staffed that part-time position since August of last year. So, as I had sent council members an email separately about, we will be incurring overtime because we have to stay on top of the payments. This does, you know, extend that period, but the amount of work there, whether it came in, now, actually, it's gonna spread it out over a period of time versus getting bombarded, this week we'd be nailed, right? It may bring a little bit of really, can spread it out a little bit longer for them. Um, I know, you know, everybody's always concerned, my concern is more for the workload in general, just because of the staffing issue. But I do appreciate your question, and just to answer, I think extending it out, it spreads it out a little bit longer for them versus getting bombarded in a short period of time, and people being stressed over deadline.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Council chair?
Councilman?
We did receive some correspondence from uh the treasurer's office, saying that um they don't recommend extending the deadline, uh, that there's, it creates a administrative problems and bookkeeping problems.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Honestly, I know everybody has their opinion in the office, but at the end of the day, you represent residents in the city, and if you can relieve and help residents, that's what employees are here for to work. So, I I support this extension.
Thank you so much. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
All right, Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
No.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Robert Conston?
No.
In Moby Dun?
Yes.
Motion carries for two.
Thank you. Next up is treasurer's claim BSNA staff training uh proposal.
Council chair?
Councilman?
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the proposal for a BSNA back-to-basic training session for the treasurer's office for a total not to exceed two thousand dollars, nine B.
Support.
All right, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion?
Council chair?
Councilman Saab?
This is coming out of the education fund, right?
No, sir.
The training fund, I mean.
It is uh one oh one, two five, three, eight, zero, two point zero, 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 which is contractual services, cuz.
What is in there right now?
Seventy-five thousand.
Thank you.
And I want you to note the last paragraph, that that uh one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars estimated travel expense, I did question BSNA cuz there's not gonna require airfare or any of that nature, cuz they come from Bath, Michigan, which is outside of Lansing. So, we're looking at more around two thousand or less for training.
Okay, I have a quick question on this.
Yes, sir.
BSNA training, we have an IT director, why doesn't he teach us?
Because I think this is what I would call back to basics. The city originally, when they started using BSNA, which I think was two thousand and one, I'm not quite sure how well they were trained, and it has not been, it's like the telephone game, it's never been carried down to correctly to where my staff is not properly trained. And this is creating problems with daily operations, speaking of operational, that's a challenge, cuz we're always calling BSNA for walkthroughs. I don't think our IT director can know everything about the finance modules that we need to use to be more efficient in what we do and more accurate on our reporting. So, we wanna go back to basics.
Is Director Cooper on?
He was supportive of this, but I can't speak for him, so hopefully.
Okay. I mean, I just, you know, what's gonna happen, I, what I don't wanna see is every single department, every single staff member, everybody come out, cuz, you know, BSNA cloud, I mean, you know, it's gonna happen with everybody, and everybody's gonna want the training, so would it be more reasonable, and and I'm not saying that I'm not for training, I'm I'm all about educational, I'm all about giving the proper training. But could it be where, you know, we just sign an unbelievable extension with BSNA at a lot of money, can we tell them?
They are training.
You know, come here and and teach everybody, and not just the treasurer's department.
So, they will do that with BSNA cloud when that conversion happens next August of two thousand and twenty six, but I'm talking about right now, today, the this staff in the treasurer's office, we need training. I have never been properly trained on BSNA. I had to learn it on my own, and I had to call BSNA and say, can you help me with this? Can you tell me how to do this report, can I do this? You know, because there's things that we're not doing, that now BSNA, now that I'm calling them and asking them, they're like, well, wait, this is how this should be, nobody even understands that. They haven't been trained, so this is, I think, really necessary.
I I know, what I'm asking you is, Madam Treasurer?
Yes.
Instead of just, you know, saying, come and te, you know, let 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 the treasurer and her staff learn, why don't we work something out where we pay a little bit more money and we allow everybody to learn? You know, the clerks department should know, the treasurer's department know, the mayor's department, the chief of staff.
Yeah, I don't know what other departments need, I'm sorry. Yeah.
You know, the clerks think she's never been.
Yeah, Council chair, if you don't mind, so it seems like we're going back to basics to one, like one oh one, then, instead of taking one oh three English, we're going back to one oh one, so uh, I know, I mean, I mean, if you think they're not trained well, I think, yeah, they're gonna suffer in the cloud, so.
Yeah, and I'm only speaking for the treasurer's office, I don't need anybody else, cuz I go tell you, um, from what I've seen, what I'm experiencing, what I'm hearing to my staff is that they weren't properly trained, they need the training resource to effectively do their job.
Does it train?
Especially considering, well, let me finish, considering that what we did ten years ago is different from what we did five years ago.
I agree.
From what we're doing today, even with our payment platforms, everything's different, expanding, and and they are integrated, but we have not been properly trained.
I know you have new staff too.
Yes, we do have new staff in there. So, again, I think for like under two thousand dollars, it's worth the investment, in my opinion, and respectfully, I ask for your support.
Council chair, I mean, no, I know where you're coming from, but council chair proposition was, instead of like just sending the treasury department,
Yeah.
let's see if we can cut a deal with BSNA and send all employees to basic training.
Right, I understand. I think, though, um, and I wish Director Cooper was here, cuz he did, was part of this, he was part of this contract, that was part of the discussions, I think Mariana will say that, um, was the overall, what has to be done for the city as a whole, and that was part of negotiating with the price they gave me for this piece. Um, that was one thing I asked Cooper, uh, Director Cooper, excuse me, was, hey, can you call them?
If you don't mind, can I hear from the chief of staff, thank you.
Um, all right, I just wanna clarify a few options as well. Um, so, as you clearly mentioned, we are in the transition for training, so Mr. Cooper has already sent a request to all of the directors, asking them what they would like to see. As soon as we have that information, if the treasurer knows what it is, we can already start scheduling the trainings, because as you are aware, our training for BSNA is already signed. So, we can start the trainings as soon as we know what we need training on and which departments we can start with. We can prioritize the treasurer's department under the existing contract to get trained on the new updated software for that. If there are specific questions related to the outdated system that we're currently using, Plant Moran is here every week, so I would just recommend that you do perhaps a comparable of how much it would cost to get a similar training from uh Plant Moran, because they have already been done, doing cer- similar trainings for them. Um, so, it's just an alternative, but a- again, I don't know if at this point it's necessary to do a full-blown training for the old system, rather than moving into the newer version that we're gonna start using. Um, so, that would just be my recommendation, I know they show you the difference between the old and the new. Um, so, you kind of get both when you're getting the new system training. But that's just my recommendation, um, again, we can double-check with Plant Moran, we can double-check with Mr. Cooper on which one would be the best path forward.
Okay, is uh, is Mr. Cooper on? All right, can you have him unmute himself? Thank you, uh. Hello, can you hear me? Yes. My question was to Madam Treasurer, was, can't you just teach a class to his, her staff on how to use BSNA instead of us paying two thousand dollars?
Or or another word, can? Also, yeah, uh, Mr. Cooper, do you think that new training with cloud, you think it's gonna cover the basics, or do we need to go take the basics again? As I know, it's just an upgraded.
It is meant to, the cloud is meant to cover the basics. Um, it is, when you take about a year, then the new will will cover the basics. I believe the treasurer is trying to get um some fundamental practices down, and that's the intention of this training that she's, that she's thinking. Um, but the training that when we do the cloud is going to be a how-to-do work in the cloud, not necessarily in a dot net program, where, again, it's gonna take about a year for this whole entire conversion process to happen.
So, I I don't understand what you're saying here, Mr. Cooper, can you, uh, my question to you was, can you teach, maybe as the IT director, uh, the the treasurer and her staff on the fundamentals of it?
That's not the training that I believe that she's thinking, and plus, when it comes to the that the individual youth of all the different applications, um, there are better people to do those trainings. My job is to make sure everything is is secure with BSNA and the overall workflows, but I believe that the treasurer is looking for a little bit more fine-grained information.
Thank you.
And training with it.
Councilor, if you don't mind, I mean, it's a $2,000, we still have one more year to go. I mean, if this $2,000 would save us from one little mistake.
I agree.
I would, uh, just go with it.
Okay.
I was just trying to feel like, let everybody kind of get, you know, some benefits of it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may just, I would disagree with the recommendation of having Plant Moran train our staff on something that's tech-related like that. Because it costs her hours, a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, motion made by, you just have something, Councilwoman?
I was wondering who's checking all this stuff now? Didn't we just, uh, we have to wait a whole year for the other thing?
This is training for the dot net.
Fundamental training for the dot net for the, so that they can be trained for the next year.
Where are we getting the money?
Contractual Services.
We've got the money.
All right.
Yeah, Councilor, I'm sorry. Yeah, Madam Treasurer, you didn't put that account number that's coming from, so if you don't mind.
Let me read that to you again. Um, contractual services in the, uh, treasurer's budget, 101253802.000. That's a budget of $75,000.
Thank you.
Which includes the IT services.
Thank you. George, you got that? You go? Yes, please.
You ready?
Thank you.
Oh, do you have it, George?
Just.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Assessor Comer Commercial Appraisal Service Contract.
Council Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agreement for commercial appraisal services between the city and Judean Associates for the agreed fee of $5,500 and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from contractual services account number 101200818000, of which the current budget is $68,271, as outlined in 9C.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Sab. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is City Engineer Deeb, Southeast Michigan Council of Government, Simcock Road Safety and Audit Grant Agreement.
Councilor.
Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council, uh, approved, uh, sorry.
It's the Councilman of mine.
Approved the grant agreement from the Southeast Michigan Council of Government, Road Safety Audit Grant Agreement and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from, for the 24,981 dollars and 31 cents, which includes, uh, $4,996 dollars and 26 cents, the 20% local, non-federal match from account 101440808000 as outlined in 9, uh, dash D.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Uh, and then I think I read on this in the backup, Mr. Deeb, we're going to have to put like 5 or 10%, or was it 20%?
$5,000.
Yep. Okay, that was my only question. Well, we're, it's going to cost us $5,000, but in return, we're going to get $25,000. Thank you.
Councilor. Yes. Mr. Deeb, we're just going with the contract provided here. Is anything changes going to go to it? Or is Mr. Farinah going to change anything? Or this is whatever they provided? It comes from Simcock, if you see it, the contract's Simcocks, not the cities.
Correct.
Yep. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is 9E City Engineer Deeb, Ecorse Creek Basin Utility Site for the incinerator property.
Councilor.
Councilwoman Breyer.
I'd like to recommend the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize Alexander Watson of the AECOM to manage all matters concerning the electric and gas utility demolition for the property located at 4901 South Ings Road, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, 48125, which is currently underdesigned by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the Ecorse Creek Retention Basin and to grant full access to account details and allow him to perform any necessary action related to utilities on the city's behalf. This authorization includes, but is not limited to, managing all aspects related to the utility services provided at the above addresses outlined in 9E.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on this? Great work here on this one. This is a great backup read, if you didn't read it, it's awesome. Thank you, Mr. Deeb, for bringing this forward. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Comptroller's Office Annual Financial Audit and Single Audit Engagement Letter.
Councilor.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council awarded a bid for the financial audit and single audit three-year service contract to Alan C. Young and Associates, uh, as the lowest bidder and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and treasurer to issue payments out of the comptroller's office contractual services GL account 101223817000 as outlined in 9 dash.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Sab. Uh, any discussion? I have a quick, uh, maybe, uh, let me just pull this up, nine F. You know, I looked at all of these and if you look at the tally sheet that we have submitted here, we have four, uh, on here, but Clark and what is it, Schaefer? Ecklet is off by 99,000, by $9,500. Alan C. Young has been doing our work for a very long time. The way I kind of look at things is, it's great that I think Alan C. Young has definitely served his purpose with us.
The 9,500 is because they sent several emails saying, hey, just so you know, the annual comprehensive financial report was not included and it's going to cost you $5,000 extra.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not talking about that. If you'll let me finish.
Yeah.
We've been using Alan C. Young for a very long time. I know it was a recommendation from, um, Plant Moran because they used to do our, uh, audits and then we brought them on to work with us. And it's been since 2020, 23. Um, I just kind of feel like, you know, we can potentially see have a different set of eyes. You know, maybe, maybe a different set of eyes come out here. We don't usually have to go with the lowest bidder. We don't always have to use, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel, but we can have a different set of eyes. And, you know, could, could that be beneficial to the city?
It, it possibly could, but the, the issue is usually with auditors is when they know the city, they, they have a better set of eyes. Bringing in a new auditor, you don't, they're going to be starting fresh and you're going to be relying a lot more on Plant Moran, which then costs more for Plant Moran because they assist us with the audit prep and then the audit, uh, throughout the audit process. Um, part of the reason why I wanted to go with the lowest bidder is Alan C. Young, as you said, has been doing the work and has done a sufficient job, as well as the idea that we, at this point, because of the financial of the city, I want to save as much money as possible.
Good to know with the parking lot. Uh, but the reality is, I, I'll, I'll take your word on that one.
Okay.
Let's agree to this one then. I, I, you know, I won't argue this one.
Yeah.
I just kind of, my mind was kind of like, well, if.
I agree with you.
Plant Moran is using Alan C. Young, you made the recommendation for Alan C. Young. Should we use, kind of get Plant Moran to feel a bit more uncomfortable and maybe have two sets of eyes rather than just somebody on the same team? Um, you know, but, but, I mean, I'll, I'll take your recommendation on it, so. Uh, that's all I had today. Yeah, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Comptroller's Office Update Recruitment Policy.
Councilor.
Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the updated procurement and purchasing policy as outlined in 9, uh, dash G.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Councilor.
Councilman.
I do suggest, I can hope, uh, the council, the honorable council body can send this to a study session. There's so many different stuff that need to be, I think, discussed between the council members before. Uh, this is basically big, changing a lot of stuff that we have, uh, you know, over, you know, we, that we oversee. Uh, for example, you know, pushing the 1,500 limit to 5,000, uh, I know there's some stuff about credit card. I know we approved something for the police department that was way higher before. So I think just for the sake of time and, uh, to be fair to everyone and, uh, residents, we, if we can take this study session so we can study it better before we, uh, can go ahead and approve anything.
I agree.
Councilor.
I agree. I, I do think that, I mean, some of these things are, are technically reasonable. You know, like I know I've had a conversation with Director Dancy and like he can't spend more than $1,500. And then he, like, when he goes to buy things for, uh, you know, for water main breaks, he's like, man, like, my hands are tied. You know, and so I think we do have to kind of understand, we have to make some type of adjustments to some of these director positions. But I, I, I agree, I think this should be taken over to a study session and, and, and really those changes can move forward.
I mean, yeah, probably every director can come and see exactly what they're looking for. Maybe we can adjust it to every department because you cannot like compare the police department to, for example, maybe the ordinance department or the library or whatever.
I agree.
Right, so each department is different and it depends what they, uh, charge the credit card for, um, so.
But like, I still like the fact that like it says, hey, if it's going between 5,000 and 25,000, it starts to go before city council. You know, so like you can't come out and spend, you know, X amount of dollars, may not have to go out for bid. But if it's a, like, let's just say it's a change of toilets. Uh, I'm just giving you a, a quick example. It's to fix all the toilets, it's going to cost you $15,000 and, you know, you know, say you, you, you did bid this, but you picked three people that said, hey, or one person said, hey, I'll do everything for you guys for $11,000. Right? City council is there, $11,000, that's material labor, they're replacing all the toilets at the Eaton Center. Let's go forward with it. But, you know, and, and so these are the type of conversations we should have. Do you go out for bid on that or do you not?
We over here says only over 25,000, so. There's no bid less than 25,000. Well, I would say probably that's a high number too, to be honest with you, Councilor.
So that, that number is.
That's a cool number, I think 25,000 is high, just kind of high.
Those numbers are, can be adjusted.
I just want to. They're taking the time now, let's take it to a study session.
Would you like to refer this back to the administration?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Uh, can we, are we able to determine a study session today or through email?
No, well, I'll get with George and we'll connect. I know Councilman Sab's going to be out of town, I know Councilman Ahmad's going to be out of town. No worries. Councilman once saw has, uh, told me he was, uh.
I just want to put down the table so we can actually have a discussion about this because it's long overdue that we update our policies.
Thank you.
Uh, I do have the information for the other item if you want.
One second. We have a question for you, please. Can you email it to me?
Email for the bidders from the.
Bless you. Hold on, guys, one second, please, Councilman, hang on. Motion to refer this back to the administration by Councilman Ahmad, Councilwoman Breyer, do you second that?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you so much. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, we're going back now to ANG's, uh, program here. What number was that again?
It was, uh,
right here, uh, 7D. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad and then seconded by.
Councilwoman.
Me.
Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell. Wrote a bunch of scribbles, you have. Hard to read. Did you want to email that over to, uh, Councilman Sab?
Yeah, I'll email it right now.
Everybody. Or email it to everyone right here so they can come look at it.
So I have the total bid amounts. Um, are you looking for the individual documents as well?
What's that?
I have the total bid amounts for the previous, uh, bid. The individual ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have the tally and the tally sheet for the total bid amounts, but it doesn't have the, all the PDFs right now.
Yeah, okay, just go down on the, go down on the tally sheet from the last, you know, my, back to the screen.
Yep. Sorry about that.
You know, you guys can go back and sort of toss any meeting.
Yeah, I know, I have it on bid now, like the total amounts, um, give me one second. Yeah, it was. 8/27/2024.
We got October 22nd, 2024?
Oh, it was twice.
October 22nd.
You have the date? October 22nd? If you go on the left-hand side, you'll see we have a, uh, calendar. October 22nd, 2024, click there, it'll pop up. There it is.
Shoot, I got pulled up on this.
Here in backup? That, there's nothing like this here since. Well, it's.
Did you send the email, uh?
We did, we're good. 117. Sure.
Yeah.
Where's the data sheet, the tally sheet that you showed me?
The tally sheet's with me, that's, that, I feel.
You just showed it to me outside.
Right, I'm sorry, hold on one second.
You just showed it to me. You still looking for it? That's. Missed shot, that's. Don't, look at the numbers, look at the spread, the, the, the tally sheet from last year. Yes, you just showed it to me outside.
This is it. Certainly.
Okay, so last year it was bid and it was seven companies bid it. This year, we bid the, the project, modified the, the, the specs because of the scaling issue, the concrete and different mixed designs. Um, five companies bid it this year. Um, the quantities are almost the same, they're estimated. This is an as-needed contract. Basically, it's an assignment, you know, we, we measure the areas, we have about 200-plus areas of repairs. We know where they are, we measure them and then we assign the work based on the quantities.
They're not going to be doing an urban trail and all the big.
No, 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 this is, uh, this is, uh, sectioning, meaning that, um, uh, sections, not the full streets.
What, what are we going to do though, like, you know, when we, when we look back at three years ago and the, and the sectionings that we fixed up, they charge us $30,000 to poke barrels out, it's like, well, it's part of the contract, you know?
So, so.
Those are concerns to me.
The, the, the breakdown for every item on that project is listed and we have prices from each bidders. So, um, when we assign a project, so we don't pay for each, we pay per group. So when we go to assign a project, we group them together. So we're not paying for, uh, traffic control for each slab. We group them together. We also don't pay mobilization for each assignments.
Who's going to be overseeing them to make sure that they're actually putting in the amount of rods?
We are, my office.
You guys said that last time and nobody, there was no.
No, no, we, 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 uh, every project is recorded and.
You did, I just want you to know.
Cup, we will have pictures of every.
I, I want, I want an update on this from you guys. I want photos of before and after.
Okay.
And, and, you know, and they got to be timestamped. You can even be a video, hey, today's date is this, this is what we're breaking down, this is the rods, this is the orange, you know, uh, how deep it's supposed to be. Look, I'm tired of Dearborn Heights getting, just getting ripped off all the time. Yeah, I'm not saying that you're doing that, but in the past, we have. Okay?
So.
Okay, Wilson, Wilson right now that was done five, six years ago looks like crap.
I, I also pull, look, look, I also pulled some concrete that was four inches thick in, in my residential neighborhood, nine years old. So how it was done, I have no idea, but going forward, every project is d- documented. So, I mean, I can't speak to the past, but we do have.
You have, you in your neighborhood, you said?
On what?
You said you have, uh, uh.
I pulled some concrete on residential streets that was.
And you said your residential street?
City, not my residential, cities, yeah. So, I mean.
Mr. Deep, I mean, we do have concerns and to be honest with you, he brought a good point. I mean, we do all the respect, we're not Superman. So how can we make sure, you cannot be everywhere like.
No, I have one employee and that's, that's.
That's what I'm saying. So how can we make your job easier or how can we make sure we are gonna check on those jobs? Because I know those A and G used to work for Angel Cement. And we had the issues with Angel Cement, if you can, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm not. You know, I have the pictures, actually. This is, I don't know if you're calling Mr. Deep by Santos' pictures. This was what, uh, Angel Cement was doing back then.
Okay.
These are the pictures I personally took out there.
Okay.
Nobody was supervising them. They were ripping out and pouring right away.
So, um, I don't believe that was the case, but that's, that's, that's okay. I mean, we, we can't.
Shehan, when you ripped it out, that wasn't the case?
That wasn't the case, no.
When they put no rod in there and stuff and you ripped it back up?
Not true at all. We had rods on every project we put. Everyone, and we can pour it if you.
On Shehan where they did the section in front of Mr. Baz's house.
I don't know who did that, but under, under our contracts, every project was seven inches and it had rods in it.
When I was there and before I was on council and I just.
We have, we have multiple contracts with, with the city. So the DPW has also a contract for, uh, uh.
It was after that incident, you reassigned Angel Cement to A and G. Am I correct or wrong?
No, they say A and, Angels gave it to A and G.
For Angels, whatever it was, it was reassigned.
We didn't reassign it. It was purchased. The company was, was, was purchased. But in any case, the projects we have now, you, you flee to select any companies. I'm not pushing for any of these companies. Select anyone, anyone. They, these are bid and, and I didn't oversee the bids he did. So select any companies you want.
I respect that. No, 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 we understand.
You know, it's, the process is the process.
I'll be able to supervise all the work and I'm just trying, I mean, and you can't be everywhere.
This, this is, this, this total value of the contract is for three years. This is not going to be assigned at one time. This is the pro, these projects are assigned on, we group them and assign area, one area at a time. So we're not jumping from Van Born to Warren. We assign one area at a time based on priorities and repair costs. So, yes, it's manageable.
I mean, I like the Council Chair's idea to have date, uh, stamped photos before, during and after. That would be great. Mr. Deep. Um, what did you think of? Of Great Lakes contracting? Uh, bid. What are your thoughts on it? I, I, I felt like it was extremely professional. I thought it was extremely organized when I went through. I mean, really, they stood out the most. I mean, they may not be the cheapest. But I mean, you got, you know, performance and evaluations from MDA. You know, you're talking this, you know, you know, my biggest fears that we're witnessing here is we've had five companies. Four years come before us. And I fell for bankruptcy. When we come after them, we got no way to, you know, there's no recommendation from, really. And it's not so much always saying we're gonna choose the lowest bidder. It's so much more saying like, who's, who is, and I, I'm just, I'm having a conversation with you. I know you're not picking and choosing. Like, did you take a look at this? What did you think of, of Great Lakes, uh, uh?
So, I worked with almost all of these companies before and, and, uh, I think they're all qualified. It's, it's only an issue of, of cost at this point. Um, you know, you know how we fund these projects, right? I mean, you know what Act Fifty-One pays and how we, how we fund this repair? This is road money. So that's Act Fifty-One. So that's what we use for large and small projects. So you know the idea. And, and that's fine. It, they're all qualified.
Well, can you, uh, uh, and sorry, I don't have it right in front of me. What is the difference in pricing between A and G?
You're talking about five hundred thousand. Yeah. More than five hundred thousand, yeah. About five eighty-five, five seventy-five difference. Yep, yep, exactly.
Have you worked with any of those? Like, do you know?
I've worked with all of them.
You work with all of them, those companies?
This, this, so either directly or as subs.
That's what I'm saying, like you had experience with them, all.
Yeah.
Are you, are you comfortable with A and G?
I had no issues with them. As a matter of fact, they're doing work as subs on our large projects as well.
Yeah. I mean, as long as you promise we're gonna have supervision over them, we're gonna get.
I want you to know, I want you to know right now, you can hear, hear it on the record. I don't care who's here from A and G. The second I feel like just an ounce is being bullshitted to the city and the residents of Dearborn Heights, I'm cutting that contract. And I want you to know, I am me personally going to take the oath and tell you that if I feel like one ounce. Is, is, is screwing over residents of Dearborn Heights, I'm cutting that contract out.
No problems.
Okay, just know that I'm, I'm going to be watching you guys. That's, that's how we're gonna play it.
No problem.
Thank you. Yeah, it doesn't have to be. I, I will, I will put a termination clause and tell you, I'll call for a special meeting and we're, we're gonna untie. So I am gonna take the recommendation of the lowest bidder, because we, we have to get this done, residents, homes and our, our blocks look like crack. Right? But I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm watching.
Council Chair. So. Since it's my motion, I wanna add, uh.
Councilman, Councilman Ahmad seconded by Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell. It's not your motion.
No, this is mine.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not. It's Councilman Ahmad.
Yeah, it's, it's Ahmad.
I mean, Ahmad and Maxwell. You're looking at the wrong one, buddy.
You want Councilman, I can add, uh, that you have, we have the ability to cancel the contracts with or without cause.
Yeah.
Uh, you can add to review the contract and approve it. So when you see the contract.
Definitely.
Well, we're putting on the record. That we want before.
And after.
During.
During.
And after. And I want every, uh, and I want whoever is out there from the city also, because we're apparently supervising every single section. I want the person that was there and witnessed the pictures and the projects initial on every single invoice or we're not paid it.
Understood.
Thank you. By the way, it sucks that we have to get this, but this is the only way we're gonna fight for our residents. You know, this is, this is what it ultimately comes back down to. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, uh, my Council Chair, Madam, Madam Clerk, do, uh. Do we, do I, you want me to read it again with, uh?
The motion was on the table.
I mean.
With it amended about the contract coming back to you. That's all that's on the table right now.
So, yeah. So amended to see the contract before final approval and we would like to add in the contract. Uh, to have pictures before, during and after. Uh, and as Councilman Sob stated, uh, whoever is supervising the, the job is to initial every time. Uh, they inspect the project and to add in the contract that we have the authority to cancel the, the contract anytime with or without cause.
With, uh, Council, Council, I'm sorry, I, I, I apologize. You want the power to cancel, what's the incentive for the other party? If you can cancel anytime without cause? I mean.
Yeah.
You, you have, I mean, I, I'm just looking at the liability. I don't see anyone agreeing to something like that, that's.
I mean, why, why not?
I mean, we can look at research and equivalent of it, putting something in, um, some checks and balances that would suffice for you. That's okay.
I, I got one better. Why don't we have a three-year contract with the renewal every single year?
Yeah.
That's what, that's what you do. You got a renewal every year. That's what you do. And if you don't wanna renew them within the second or third year, you don't have to. But if they're doing good work, you continue them and, and let's, let's not pray on their downfall. Let's pray that these guys and these men and women do a good job.
We're just doing our part, Council Chair. We can still, we can do your, uh, your way and we can add still with the cause. If something we don't like.
There you go.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a cause.
We'll have a cause, yeah, yeah.
But I want this contract to come first.
Yeah, that's pending, uh, council's approval with the contract. Alright, can you, uh, can we re?
With cause?
With cause, with the renewal every year on the contract. For three years, but it would still needs, it still needs approval by the council for the next, every year for the next two years.
Yeah, one-year contract, renewable each year.
Yeah.
You're good?
Can you read us what you have?
I'm gonna listen.
It's scribbles.
Lovely Council Secretary, you can do it again if you want to. She's going to read, she's gonna have to listen.
I just wanna, I wanna make sure we didn't miss anything. I'm not asking you to read it because I want you to read the motion.
Well, we also have, you, you want the contract to come back to council after the following modifications. Right? Which are pictures before, during and after?
Yep.
Each project?
Right.
Each section.
Each section, okay. And then I missed the next one. There was another.
Uh, whatever city engineer or representative is out there. For every section, his name has to be signed off on that with the pictures.
Whoever is inspecting the job is initial next to the inspection.
And most pictures have to be timestamped.
Okay, and then the contract can be canceled at any time?
With cause.
With cause, okay.
And it's, uh, it's to be renewed every year.
Renewal every year.
Contract, but I had to.
Three-year renewable yearly, okay.
Yeah.
Three-year renewable annually. So renewable, okay, three-year, but renew, okay, yearly.
Annual renewals.
Annual, annual renewal for the next three years. Well, they still get a three-year contract. They have to come with this body. And, and, and if A and G wants to do good service and I know there's a representative, while you're doing work, hop into a city council meeting, give us an update, give the residents an update. Like engage with the residents. It doesn't have to be, well, we're out here doing work. No, like, let, 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 the council, not saying that we wanna have oversight on, on your guys. At the end of the day, you guys manage the city.
Yeah.
But give, give the people some type of understanding of what's happening. You know, the, the update that we did with, uh, Platte Moran and not Platte Moran, weight trim was great. I didn't know any of that was happening. And it's awesome. The residents should know. Take, like, take, take, take things out of the books of other municipalities, like Kevin Coleman in Westland just did. Did this whole entire thing, an update on what, what they've done in the last six months. And he does six-month updates of what they've done in different neighborhoods and different streets and things like that. So it's just something, you know, just some food for thought. Um, any other discussion? All in favor to amend the motion by Councilman Ahmad, what, you meant your motion, you seconded?
Yes.
Seconded by Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell, uh, with the, uh, amended motion to bring back the contract before any approval or any job is started. Have them make sure that there's a clause, a clause in there that says it can be terminated with cause. To make sure that there's an annual, uh, renewal, but with this company, with stamped, signed photos, uh, inspected by the, whomever the city engineer is and it's stamped.
I just have one question for the company that I represented. Who's here from the representative? Does anybody from the city or past city employees work for this company? Do you have any employees that are former employees?
Let him step up to the podium, please.
My name is Marco Andrade. I'm the owner of A and G Construction, nineteen thirty-eight Detroit.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Okay.
My question to you is, do you have any former city employees or anybody that's tied to the city working for your company?
No.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Okay, I, I wanna, I wanna add a couple of things that you asked. You keep saying Angels Construction. A and G is completely different. And you keep saying pictures. You can go on all the patches and all the. Job that we did for the Dearborn Heights, you can go core. We got rods, we got more than seven inches. That's what it's called for. And I do understand your obsession with A and, with Angels, but I'm not Angels. I'm A and G Construction.
How long have you guys been open for?
Five years. But I've been working all my life, since nineteen eighty-nine.
Council Chair, just, uh, just to go back, you did work for Angels.
Subcontract.
Correct.
Subcontract, yes.
At the time when the contract, when you worked for the city, and that's what I was referring to, Angels. That's how you got in the picture, was when Angels, when you guys were reassigned the contract that belonged to Angels.
Yes.
So I'm not going back and picking on you. That's exactly what I stated. And with the problem that I had with Angels on Shehan Street is I witnessed, there was no rebar, there was no concrete. There are, there was no, uh, crushed concrete under there, nothing. The slab was pulled back out. I have video of it. I don't know what the engineers say. No, it wasn't. It was pulled out.
Sir, I, I, I didn't, I didn't went and pulled anything out of it.
I, I, no, no, no. What I'm saying is that after that incident, that's when you came, became involved in the city. And I stand on my record what I'm saying and I'm correct on my dates and timeframe. I'm not saying you, but you were involved with Angels.
I was just subcontract.
Okay, but.
Nothing to do with the port.
But, no, no, but you were still involved with that contract. That's all I was saying, is you were a subcontract.
Yeah, but, yeah, but he was, he didn't come through the city process.
No, 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 no. I, I never said that. I said he was, you, you were reassigned from Angels to A and G that took the contract. Two years ago, when you guys did the work.
Would you, would you say your name, old sir?
Marco Andrade.
Marco, I, all we ask is, look, uh, hang on one second, please. Uh, this is my ask, for the sake of the residents. And I, I, I feel like you're a passionate man. You've come to some, several meetings. You've been wanting this bid and. You know, I, I know you may have to clean up some of the mess that Angel kind of went through and whatnot. All we ask is that you really have, have a longstanding relationship with Dearborn Heights. Don't kind of just like do things to do things to get it done and to get paid, like. Care for the city like you would care for your own home. That's my only ask.
Well, I do my job. I do a very proud, you know, I like to do good job, uh, good with the community, um. And I don't like to cut corners.
Thank you. That, that's all we're asking for, man. We, we, if you, if you're gonna say you're gonna put the rocks, you're gonna compress everything, you're gonna make the seven inches or whatever it is, I, I know none of this stuff. Just please do it. That's all we want.
We had, we had app, we had an app in the phones. You could take a picture and tell you the exactly time and the, and, and location.
Okay, that's great.
We, we do that for, for all the records that we do.
Do you have any other municipal city work?
We got Trenton, we got Oak Park, we got City of Detroit, uh, Lincoln Park.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That makes me feel better. And this, this makes me feel better, does. Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it. Look how happy Mr. Deep is. Look at him. Never seen Mr. Deep smile so hard in his life. He's getting everything passed today, Mr. Deep. All, all we want is, uh, okay.
In nine H.
We were at nine G. Did I have a vote on that? Ahmad and Councilman Briar. We referred that back, right?
Yeah.
They were referred back. Next up is nine H. Councilman Ahmad.
Council Chair, I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following budget amendment as outlined in nine dash H.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Motion.
It's long.
Council Chair.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. You get a lot of seconds today, Councilman Constant. Any just reading some of these motions? Any discussion?
Any of this being used from fund balance or parts fund balance?
Uh, the only fund balance that's gonna be used is the major and local streets, uh, fund balance to, uh. Put a twenty percent match for the Semcald grant that was.
Five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was presented like a few items ago. The other one, uh, you, as a council body approved the recreation coordinator update, upgrade. But we need to come back for a formal amendment to ensure that we have the correct salaries and the salary line item for that employee.
What is it? I'm sorry.
So I'm not sure if it was last meeting or the meeting before, um, Director Zaboznik from Parks and Recs wanted to upgrade, uh, uh, recreation coordinator position. Um, you, you as a council body approved it. However, amendment, an amendment was not accompanied by that motion. So I'm coming before you to ensure that we amend that salary line item to ensure that it's correctly reflected on the budget.
But that's from fund balance too?
No, uh, so you're gonna increase the salary by fourteen thousand. You're gonna reduce. Um.
Over twelve.
Over.
Yeah, overtime by seven, reduce overtime by seven thousand, reduce part-time by five thousand and then reduce major office part-time by two thousand to make it whole.
Come up to fourteen.
Okay, thank you.
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Badun, can you, uh, explain like the state grant revenue, like? How is that? Uh, uh, just, this is confusing for me. Like I.
Uh, so when we get reimbursed, um, we have to expend the money. So we have to have an expense line item to pay it from.
Okay.
Which would be the first line and grant expense.
Mm-hmm.
Then when we complete the project and the project is, uh, reviewed and approved. We receive money through the state or the federal government, in this case it's the state grants, and we have to put those in a revenue line item to offset that expenditure.
I know, but this is money that's coming, uh, from us that twenty percent match is not coming back to us.
I know. So if you see the grant expenditures.
Expenses, yeah, twenty-four thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
And then when you have those great expenditures, you have twenty-four thousand.
Mm-hmm.
However, we are only getting nineteen thousand, which is the third line item.
Okay.
Then in order to offset that, we are transferring money from major and local street to five thousand to make it even.
Okay, now I get it. Okay, and, uh. So when we got this from fund balance, was this, so this wasn't budgeted for then, no?
That wasn't budgeted for, but it's from major and local street, uh, fund balance. So it's not general fund balance.
Yeah, thank you. Ah, that's why.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Next up is DPW Director Nancy, purchase and payment of water vector.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman.
I'll make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of a Vector two-one-zero-zero-I from McQueen Group for a cost not to exceed six hundred forty. Two one zero zero I from McQueen Group for a cost not to exceed six hundred forty three thousand four hundred dollars. In addition, authorize American Controller Clerk to sign necessary warrants, treasury to issue payment. From account GL number five nine two dash five three seven dash nine eight one dot zero zero zero, beginning balance is four hundred fifty thousand. The ending balance would then be zero, and GL number five nine two dash five four zero dash nine eight one dot zero zero zero. The beginning balance was two ninety seven, two hundred ninety seven thousand five hundred thirty dollars, the ending balance would be. One hundred and four thousand one hundred thirty dollars, these are both capital outlay GL accounts within the Water Department as outlined in nine.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman, uh, Saab.
Council Chair.
Yep.
Honestly, this truck is so needed in the city.
What is a water vector?
It sucks, uh, cleans out the sewers and shuts the sewer lines where there's clogs and. This is definitely something the city needs instead of paying dukes for everything.
We need it.
Uh, Director Nancy, can you talk about this a little bit?
So, we have to use dukes anymore?
No, like, I mean, the city doesn't have, we have a small one, I think.
You don't have to use dukes anymore?
Not for. For some, but we have, you can use it on the department.
So this, this city's been operating with one vector since I got here and I think the last couple of years, and, uh, it's just kind of the. I guess it's the similar to, uh, like a main fire truck, right, like that's the. Piece of equipment that we can take out to hydroexcavate a lot of different things, clear sewer backups, right now, the city has one vector that when you run one. All the time, every day, it'll just age its life even quicker, so a lot of cities, I haven't seen many cities this size operate with less than even three. But it's a start to at least get two that we can rotate in and out, because it does take a lot of effort, right, if we go out and use this particular vector to respond to a sewer backup. You gotta bring it back and do some disinfecting before you can take it out and then use it to hydroexcavate wat- drinking water facilities, so it, uh. Like I said, it's just, it's, it's one of the pieces of equipment, probably the main one that our, every department can use, primarily the water and sewer. Department when it comes to main breaks, a lot of times it'll save from having to dig up concrete, right, if you can hydroexcavate an area and remake repairs. Without ripping out concrete, you're making saves there, um, it's just a lot safer. So, this is just one of the vehicles, like I said, we've had, we have one, I think it's a few years old, most cities operate on vectors being switched out about every. Seven to eight years, so if we buy one now, we'd probably be looking at trying to purchase another one more likely eight years, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, can you, can, do, did we budget for this?
Uh, it's just capital outlay, so I've been sitting there talking to the department, right, the department has capital outlay money in it. Whatever else we got left now, whatever Nancy just read that we added, so. Specific vehicles, but they're budgeted so that when we discuss and try to plan, and we're trying to build out a little bit more of a plan so. More individuals will know, alright, in two years, we want to purchase this particular piece of equipment, but this is kind of the start of. What we feel we need is a priority in a department, so, they're not, those capital outlay numbers are not tied to specific pieces of equipment. So it's kind of on me and then all of our supervisors to determine what piece of equipment.
Water fund since it's a.
It is, yeah, this is strictly a water and sewer department, occasionally we'll use it to. Clean out storm catch basins and, and storm pipe, which I, you could argue at some point might be able to use a little bit of street funding. But that's more of a rare occurrence than su- sanitary sewer backups and water main breaks.
You know, can, you know, Dr. Nancy, can you do me a favor?
Sure.
When you get a chance, can you make a video?
Yeah.
Uh, maybe get with Angela, or even get with Councilman, or, or even get with Councilman Ahmad. And, and as the DPW Director, can we talk to residents and say, hey, Director Nancy here from the DPW Department. You, if you're looking outside your home and you see your catch basin, and, and it's all covered with leaves and gunk and stuff. To help prevent flooding, please clean in front of your catch basin, while, while we still have a street sweeper, you know, we can't get to everything right away.
Yeah.
We never know, I mean, other than Angela Vanegas and maybe a couple of others, I don't know how many people, like I passed by my mom's the other day and. You, you know, they just, seems like they just fixed it, Mr. Deep, they fixed the sewer that was caving in. And it looked like there was some leaves that were covered, I said, Ma, they just fixed this, she's like, well, am I supposed to clean it, like, I didn't know I was supposed to clean it. I said, yeah, you gotta clean it.
Well, uh, I'll get with you, Councilman.
So Nancy, is this truck and a piece of equipment in stock or something?
Uh, I wanna, my goal is to get where we order these. As early in July as possible, so they can, usually typically they take about nine months, so if we can get it in that same fiscal year, right, if you order it July fifth. And you can get it June fifteenth, it's a lot easier for Marty and any of the auditors to say, we approve this in this budget year. Receive it in this budget year versus, hey, if we order something in February or March, we get it the following fiscal year, it's just a complete fiasco. For trying to figure out auditing purposes. This, this one should, we should be able to get between, before June thirtieth of next year, it's not, we're not gonna get this next week, but. Yeah.
Sure, we're gonna film you, make some phone calls.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying, I'm trying to push, so, hey, move this other priority, but when you have some cities.
Is this the only company that makes those trucks?
Uh, Vector is the, yes, there are a couple other off brand ones, and from my experience in talking to other cities and everybody in the profession. The Vector manufacturer just has the easiest, safest ways to do it. I'm sure in coming years, there might be some other companies that start to. Improve their quality to try to compete with Vector, but for the last, I mean, the, the industry standards has been this particular.
Did you want to search about the price difference between, um, this company and the others?
So, uh, yes, but Dohany used to be the only main, or distributor of Vector in the state. They lost the contract, now it's McQueen Services, so it is bid out at a state level. Um, a lot of times you can get trade in, but we don't actually have any equipment to trade in to try to offset some of this cost, right, like we're in. Situation where we, if we have money, at least in these line items for capital outlay. We're in a situation where we should do some straight purchases to at least build up a little bit of inventory, but there are a couple off brand companies that. I've not talked in other cities, other directors, that, there's no other companies that are really up to this quality of. Piece of equipment, and this is the most important equipment that a water department's gonna have, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Saab, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries, next up is the petition from citizens, citizens petition to address the. Unauthorized disclosure of minors' personal identifiable information, PII.
We have nine G before.
Nine G.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Yep, the, the, uh.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman, uh, Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and Garden City for the establishment of a family resource center. And authorized the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement as outlined in nine dash, uh, J.
Second, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant, any discussion?
Council Chair, uh, so, uh, as we discussed last, uh, last meeting. We send it, we send it back to the administration where Mr. Fernha did the changes that we're looking for, uh, where we, uh, uh, I mean, we. Uh, we, they're looking for a five year term, but we can cancel with ninety days, uh.
Hopefully we don't cancel.
Yeah, hopefully we don't cancel, let's see how it goes, uh, and all the information is on, uh, by City of Dearborn Heights and Garden City.
Alright, and I did email all you guys the contract today, so you guys all have received that in your email, I hope you guys looked at it. I already hear that. Um, um, but yeah, I emailed it to all you guys and I hope that you guys saw.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it, congratulations to Dearborn Heights and Garden City, uh, Garden City.
He's, yeah.
And, and Council Chair, for your record, the Ga- Garden City approved it also seven, seven.
Thank you, next up is citizens petition to address the unauthorized disclosures of minors' personality and identifiable information.
Council Chair.
Yes.
Is this a received note and file?
I don't know.
I think it is.
Yeah.
It's up to the council, if you want to take action on.
File this information.
Yeah.
That we, uh, receive note and file the, uh, citizens petition to address the unauthorized disclosure. Of the minors' personally identifiable information.
Support.
Hmm, alright, motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Ahmad, uh, any discussion?
How close was it, I'm sorry, what's wrong?
Guys.
Wondering who you were gonna pick.
Oh, I honestly, I, I.
I was saying, of course, it's your ears, so.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um. Okay, uh, for this, as a received note and file, I'm okay with this, the reality is at the last meeting. You know, we, we, we showed our remorse and, and I can tell you right now, I'm still extremely bothered with that fact that this happened, but we heard from our IT director. I asked the young lady that was also speaking on behalf of the D seven dads club. Um, if you felt like this investigation didn't go well, to please come before us, call me and I will, I will reach out to the Michigan State Police. I haven't received anything, yet we still took the initiative to bring this before the body, I had a conversation with our clerk. And this is just to ultimately say that we know that there's a petition out there, we saw the signatures, and we are gonna understand that we, we, we hear you and we received it. We make a note of it and we will file it, and I think that ultimately that's the best thing here, um, any other discussion?
Sounds good.
Alright, all in, well. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, next up is ordinance and resolution, second reading. With a potential third reading, whoever reads this, uh, for age twenty five dash O two dash short term rental.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman.
Recommended, okay, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council moved that the proposed ordinance. H dash two fat five dash zero two, an ordinance of the City of Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Relating to upholding the prohibition, proba- prohibition of certain short term rentals. Ensuring that this prohibition is not polluted or diminished through the improper in.
Supposed to be interpretation.
Okay, and or application of existing provisions in chapter thirty six of the city code. Enhancing the city's ability to enforce this prohibition and providing for stricter penal ties. And for the violation of this probation, prohibition. Be it ordained by the City Council of the Dearborn Heights. Of the City of Dearborn Heights, that the code of ordinances of the City of Dearborn Heights, Michigan is hereby amended by adding. A section to be numbered three six dash eight one to be considered read for the second time and be effective. Upon publication as outlined in eleven A, and I think we need to be considered, uh, to be read at least a third time.
So, yeah, can you, before you get a second, can you have it say, to be considered read for the second time and become. Effective after the third reading?
Yep, 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 that sounds good, for the second time and to become effective upon the third reading.
After the third.
After the third reading upon publication as outlined in eleven A.
Support.
Motion made by, uh, Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell, seconded by Councilman Ahmad, um, Madam Clerk. I, I want this to be a second reading, we can have a few discussions about things that we want to make adjusted, like I want this enforcement to be. Through the police department, right?
So who, who are we asking to do this, special court?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we need to relay in the motion, what you want changed.
Okay, well, as, as long, I, I don't think a thousand dollar fine is enough. I think, and then I wanted to say, if you're marketing, you can be fined up to a thousand dollars just for marketing. You know, and if you do, and the police do show up to your home and you have this as an Airbnb. You know, we're, we're gonna put that five thousand dollar ticket and, and, and it's gonna go to court, and if we can't find you, we're gonna levy it on that property. And you can have, you know, you, you know. Look, at, at the end of the day, we're, if we're paying for the court costs regardless, the five thousand dollars is added on there, if you're doing it three times, that's fifteen thousand dollars. No court costs is gonna cost the city fifteen grand, when we're, when we're prosecuting out of our own jurisdiction, so, I mean, the reality is, um, and, and, you know.
Council Chair, has the motion been fully read before we do the discussion yet?
We did, we read the motion.
It's been read fully.
If, if this is discussion, I just have, I, I oppose the motion, I did put, I would ask that the minutes from the planning board. Um, commission be included, yeah, I just wanna make sure it's formal, let's put on the record, and reason I oppose it, because of litigation.
We saw Mr. Fadlala's comments and how he's okay with it, I, I read the backup in the minutes on it.
Yeah, and I just wanna make sure my opposition to the language and everything else, some of the things that.
Thank you.
Uh, have been said.
Please go through the council chair, please.
I, I thought I was talking to you.
Yeah, I know, but you, you had to say council chair, and then we can go through that conversation.
Sure.
Thank you so much, um, so Madam Clerk.
So how about this one? You're going to amend it to refer this to special legal counsel to make the following changes.
Correct.
That sounds cool. And the changes are? To become effective after.
Still open for discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, I knew, I know you said, wanna leave it to the police department, but I think it should be a teamwork between ordinance and police department, I think ordinance should be first. Then police department, I don't know if, I would like to hear from the director, uh. No, I understand, but this is.
Joint, where you can say that.
A joint work, a teamwork, uh, so I don't know if he has any plan, how to.
We have, we're, we're creating the ordinance to allow what plan of, of what the expectation is of, he doesn't have that plan. The expectation is gonna be this, if we see things online, being marketed for an Airbnb.
So that'll be ordinance department.
You might listen, you might not be able to know the address of that home, but I can tell you it's very easy to find that home. A quick photo of that home can be taken with the address, you put it in Google, just a screenshot, you put it in Google, guess what happens? Yeah, you know, anytime I go for an Airbnb and I wanna know where the, you know, they don't give you the exact address, you know what I do? I screenshot it before I go to Florida or something, I put it in Google, Google tells me exactly where I'm at. Uh, uh, AI has taken over. But, but, but the, but the reality is this, and, and it should say, if you're marketing an Airbnb home in Dearborn Heights on a website. And we can find that address, we're gonna, we're gonna fine you a thousand dollars, if you do have, and that can be on the ordinance department. Right, you can find an address, you can send it to the ordinance department, they can automatically, without a warning, issue a foul, because this, this is an ordinance. Right, and if you are doing it, and the police go out there, it's a five thousand dollar fine.
I think, I think a letter should be sent to all non homestead homes, basically saying, uh, Airbnb is now it's, uh.
And I think it needs to be a, not an annual, but maybe a, you know.
Quarterly.
No, 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 every two years, you can do an every two year updated letter to everybody saying, if your home is being used as an Airbnb, you can be charged a five thousand dollar fine. And the Airbnbs are prohibited in the City of Dearborn. Usually might be a little expensive, guys.
I mean, even, they can do it through the building department, once somebody is, has a rental, they come to sign. They can check, make sure they sign that they're not gonna, uh, short term.
Let's add that in there too, that if, when a, when a house comes before signing any documentation. They act, saying they agree, they acknowledge they will not allow this property to be used as a short term.
I'm gonna ask you to repeat that once we get done with the discussion, okay?
Connect with Gary on, on this, and, and I'll get Councilman Ahmad also involved in this as well.
Got that's, got that inspector here.
You have something to say? No, we have the beat keeper, no.
Um, but I will also connect with Gary on that, but if, simply say, a checkmark, uh, allowing residents that have rental properties to acknowledge. That they will not mean that we don't allow Airbnbs and that can be church or short term rentals, STRs.
Needs to be fine tuned.
Yeah. Yeah.
Council Chair, a check mark where?
To acknowledging that they will not, that, that they understand that we have a short term rental STR ordinance. And that if you do fail to, uh, uh, not follow. When you, when you, when you.
When you apply for a certificate of occupancy?
For rental property, they have to make sure that they check some.
I don't know what the forms are.
Not, not that it won't be for short term rentals, but it's acknowledging that they know.
You're on the renting, uh, long term.
They're doing long term rentals.
And that's on the document that.
At the building department.
At the building department, that. I don't know the forms, I don't know.
I will get, I will get with Gary, but you could just put, you know, a, a notion on there, and I will get with Gary on that as well. It'll be through both.
We just want to write, so I, and not knowing the forms in them.
Yeah, and as long as anybody that's buying a property, both primary or residential, I'm sorry. Primary or rental should start having to be able to protect ourselves, that they are saying. As long as they buy this property, they are acknowledging that they could potentially be fined if they do any STRs in the City of Dearborn Heights. Maybe they should be across all of our documentation moving forward in the City of Dearborn Heights with this resolution, and that allows us to be protected. Okay?
I'm not grasping at all, so.
I come in and buy a house, I wanna get a certificate of occupancy, I have to fill out a form at the building department, the building department will have an additional section. That says, I, Councilman Ahmad, acknowledge that I'm buying this home as a, either A, rental property, or B. As, as a primary residence.
Long term.
You know? Regardless, a rental property, or, but, or, or we're not saying what they're acknowledging and when they check this market initial and sign. If they will not allow this property in the City of Dearborn Heights. If they will not allow this property in the city of Dearborn Heights to be used as a short term rental. And if so, and if they do, they are acknowledging that they will be levying under tax a five thousand dollar fine if they get caught, blah, 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 blah. Whatever the verbiage is that we, we agree to.
So this way, they have no excuse to say, I didn't know.
Yes, they're, they're signing the dotted line beforehand. I mean, look, Angela, this is, I'm going to be honest with you. It's going to be a learning experience. I mean, what I can tell you is it's going to be a new administration. What's important to this administration, what's going to be important to the next administration? You know, is, is ultimately comes back down to the administration. I can't tell you that I have the answer on how to do it. What I can tell you is that ultimately this is a concern, at least for me. And as long as I'm around, I'm going to, I'm going to continue to argue this. And how are we going to, how are we going to figure it out? I don't know, but. Yeah, you know, you're going to get updated by being informed. You're going to be acknowledging anytime you buy a property in the city of Dearborn Heights. So there are going to be many different avenues of explaining to them, and I'm sure the media is going to catch attention once we finally approve this. Well, no, I'm, I'm sure he's going to be informed. If, if it's a rental property in the city of Dearborn Heights, everybody's going to get a letter. Yeah.
Doesn't go to the property. I know, no, it doesn't go to the property.
Then, then they're going to get a letter. Anything that's not homestead is considered as a rental property.
Council chair, so that we get this correct, can, can, um, Councilwoman Denise Malinowski Maxwell. Amend it to refer this to special legal counsel. For pending modifications requested by city council.
Correct.
Amend it like that.
That way, because there was, you seen the Darren headlights, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
And then.
And allow it to go to a third reading before it's published.
Yeah, we got that in there already, so then we'll just add that.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell, seconded by Councilman Ahmad for the, uh. To refer back based on the city councils.
I think we already.
All in favor, please state aye.
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 Let's do that again. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, I'm, I'm ready.
All right.
Ready? Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
No. I think we got to be much, much tougher on this.
Okay.
Crackdown program.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Brier.
In some ways I agree with Saab. We should get Dearborns and then go from there.
Dearborn doesn't have one. Dearborn's allowing it in their, in their resident, in their business area.
Designated areas.
Yeah, we don't have designated areas. We don't have a hotel. We don't have a downtown districts.
It's something on the books now. They've limited, I understand that.
Councilwoman Brier.
A learning curve.
Yeah. She said yes.
Yes, okay. Um, Robert Constant?
Yes.
In movie.
Yes, absolutely.
Motion carries, five, one.
Thank you. Next up is business license renewal, Cars R S Auto Sales LLC.
Council chair. I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the business license renewal of Cars R S Auto Sales LLC at. Eight, two, three, zero, North Telegraph as outlined in thirteen dash A.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Council chair.
Councilman?
Yeah, I could swear this is came recently. This has been a year already?
Yeah.
Wow.
Uh, Madam Clerk, today, are they good with standing and everything?
I did look. I didn't see anything, right? Okay, they were good with water and, and, and personal property.
Thank you. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is business license renewal, X Drive Auto Sales LLC.
Council chair.
Councilman?
I moved the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the business license renewal for X Drive Auto Sales LLC at. Six, five, two, eight, North Telegraph as outlined in thirteen dash B.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Maxwell. Any discussion? Menalowski Maxwell? All in favor? I, I made the correction.
That's all.
Yes. Any discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is comments from council members.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
So I just, uh, I voted no on the short term rentals that I just don't think it goes far enough. How we're going to enforce it? Yeah, the fines are great and anything, but okay, if we give somebody a fine, then what? Keep giving them fines? I mean, how about they renting it half of a, half of a day and rented it two times a day? We're not going to be out there. The city's closed Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Who's going to enforce those?
Do anything about it?
No, I believe that we should have something, because this is a second reading and we're taking it for discussion or a third. We should, you know, if we're going to go and approach and put this, we should have a dedicated team. Whereas if we're going to charge these kind of fines, we should have a team in the city, employees there. It's all their job is, short term rentals. And we should focus on that, because just like right now, trash day pickup, ticketing. We don't ticket nobody. There's no enforcement.
You, you know, you know what the issue is, Councilman? The problem is, well, not the problem is, the, the good thing out of this, once you do enforce it and you build this team. And then there's no more short term rentals and you're paying this team, the city can't hold that budget.
Uh, we'll see what happens with the third reading. Anyway, a few other things I'd like to talk about, um. I plan at the next meeting, bringing a. A motion forward to have our special legal counsel work on ordinance to. Uh, forfeit vehicles for reckless drivers in the city like, uh, following, uh, what Dearborn and Flint is doing. Um, another thing is, you know, a few weeks ago, I want to put this on the record, not only as a councilman, as a, as a resident. Councilman on his body. Was, uh, was recorded by a group of people. Uh, mentioned a few of us in there. And. What he said is absolutely unacceptable. And he's been going around to every business owner in the city. And I'm going to have the police reach out to these business owners, slander us, saying that we were going after his family. And all this stuff has happened and playing victim. What I eventually plan on doing is putting this whole recording out. Because to be honest with you, instead of manning up saying what he did. He's going around playing victim. And I'm not okay what was said about me or about any of council members and what else was said in their, in their recording. No, AI did not do it. I have never insulted anybody's kids. I've never attacked anybody's family. I've never said anything wrong at this meeting. About anybody's kids or anybody's family members. So these allegations going around the city and all these business owners calling me. Especially, uh, businesses that have contracts with the city calling me, telling me, one, two, three, four is unacceptable. It needs to stop. And I'm bothered by it, to be honest with you. Because I'm pretty sure most of you have heard what this audio was, and it's not pleasing. It's not okay, but eventually I'm going to, I'm going to post it out there. I'm going to post every single second of it out there for every resident to hear. Um. There is blight, folks, the streets look horrible. Please clean in front of your homes, put your trash cans away. You cut your lawn, blow the. Blow pieces out of the street, off the sidewalk. I guess you cut your grass, but don't do a half job. Complete the job, please. Um. Really, we get, so we were in a bunch of group chats and neighborhoods. All we do is get speeders, speeders, speeders down neighborhoods. Please tell your kids. Slow down. I promise you, I'm going to put that resol- I'm, we're going to get that ordinance passed. And those cars are going to get forfeited, just like every other city is doing. I met with, uh, Mayor of Detroit. And he's like, yeah, we, we chase with helicopters. And once we chase you with a helicopter to get your car, that's how we bought a second helicopter. So I hope to follow his moves. Thank you.
I wish we can have a helicopter.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have a helicopter.
You're not in this one, we'll take two.
Rich. Anybody's.
Um, quickly, I will just say, um, I know that this past was an election. You know, our clerk and her staff did a phenomenal job. They worked extremely hard. I won't take their thunder, but, um, you know. I, I think I say this day in and day out. We are so lucky to have Lynn Sinia working for the city of Dearborn Heights. If you guys.
Sometimes.
You know.
Thank you.
Only you guys knew, man. I swear that the amount of work that she is doing. So I'll, I'll tell you, we haven't had a comptroller. And so the person that's signing all the documents is Bern Lynn Sinia. And she's been our comptroller, she's been our treasurer, she's been working with the council, she's been working for the residents.
And our auditor.
He did, you know, he uses that, he clerk.
I meant say clerk, sorry.
He calls me the treasurer.
Forgot the auditor.
She's become the auditor.
I understand.
I mean, really. Then I swear from the bottom of my heart, we're so lucky to have Dearborn Heights. Is so lucky to have you and, and my hat, my hat is folded over to you. Um. Anything you and your staff ever needs, I'm one hundred percent supportive of you guys. George, thank you so much. I know you guys also are working day in and day out. And so to you, to Sally and to Dana. I mean, it's, it's your whole team and, and you're only a good clerk because your team is just as good.
Yes.
And so I want to tell you to all you guys and thank you to Kathy for coming back to assisting you. Um, and, and you guys do such a phenomenal job. Hand to God. Nobody, no clerk department can operate like Dearborn Heights clerk. You guys are the absolute best. Um, and then, you know. Thank you. Um, and, and I just want to also kind of just piggyback on a few things here. Um. The other night, maybe I'm just getting old. Really, I'm not old, I'm thirty five, but, you know, the other night I was leaving. Uh, my buddy's house in East Dearborn. And. I was, I was driving at like eleven thirty at night and I was so tired. So maybe I had it on cruise control forty miles per hour. I'm in the middle lane and all I saw was cars flying past me. Cutting through lanes and I said, it was so dangerous. I was, I was so afraid. And all I can think about is when, you know, they got into Dearborn Heights. It just became drag racing show and everybody was just flying, going through red lights. Like, I said, what is going on? It, it is the craziest thing I've ever seen at night. It's not like this during the day. But at nighttime, really, it's like they come out and they come out and, and they're not being stopped in Dearborn Heights. And, you know, to our police officers that, you know, going day in and day out to put in the work, God bless you guys. Cause it is, it is a dangerous thing out there. And this was like a Friday night. I haven't been out on a Friday night in a long time. But it was, it was wild. And, you know, really, I was afraid. And so our residents, I, I, I hear you, I feel you, happening in our local roads, it's happening on our major roads. And, and the police department really needs to start cracking down on this, saying that there's a zero tolerance for this in Dearborn Heights. Um, and I think what Councilman, uh, Saab is saying, like Dearborn is doing, like Detroit is doing. If you're seeing somebody, there is no ordinance that says after the act, can you actually take away their vehicle? Unless there's some type of policy, and I believe that also ultimately can go through the police department. We need to ultimately support our police officers and say, if this Honda vehicle on Chehan is doing sixty, seventy miles per hour. We have the, you know, a, a, a footage of who's driving the car. It matches to that person. We should be able to take, we should be able to confiscate that vehicle and, and impound that vehicle and, and give that person a reckless driving ticket. Uh, because it's, it can be tolerated. Uh, thank you so much. Anyone else?
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I also would like to echo whatever you said about Madam Clerk and her staff for an amazing job they did last week. And I also would like to thank all the voters who exercised their rights to vote last week, and I hope we can see more. Uh, in, in November. Um, I also would like to salute the police department for an outstanding event, uh, the police national night out last week. Was an amazing event, uh, that many residents attended. Uh, where you had the chance to, uh, just, you know, have some fun with our police officers, uh, voice your concerns. Uh, they did an amazing job also with the police explorers. So I hope the next event will see more residents, uh, added. And also I'd like to congratulate the fire department for winning, uh, the baseball game. Uh, and, you know, better luck next, next year for the police department.
Why did you get a shirt?
Why did you get a shirt? That's why you're thinking of.
What shirt?
Cause I'm advisor with the police explorers. I'm just messing with you. You, you, we're lucky to have you.
Appreciate you, Councilor.
The score was eighteen to eight.
Oh, on the fire, uh, and thank you to our police and fire.
And the fires have been winning the last few years.
You know, Councilman Ahmad said that the police department was going to win. This guy's been so pro police.
He tried.
And guess what? They got blown up by the fire department.
I love them both. They never had it for the past ten years, so. I had the best prediction, more injuries than the home runs.
Yeah. Glad there was no injuries and you were wrong.
No, no, there was a few scoffs.
Any, any, anyone else?
Council chair.
And so woman Brian.
Go ahead.
All right.
Ladies first.
Finish on the last one we were talking about and commend the fire, uh, the police department on having food for everybody that stayed later. It was excellent. We'll have to find where that guy is and go there.
Perfect, I'm Ford Rowan.
Okay, yeah, they, they were really good and, uh, it, it was well attended too and we had music. Um, but the other thing, um, we also had the, the night that you're talking about. We had a great attendance over at the Justice Center. It's nice to see people come out. And, uh, be hosted by the police department in such a manner. We should do things like this more often. And it seems like there was another, oh, when we were talking about Lynn. The only difficulty I noticed and possibly Gail and Lou. Uh, that, that worked the elections was the people were wondering for sure where they were to vote. Uh.
Yeah.
We sent them from Eaton over to Annapolis all day long. And, uh, but it was good that we did it for this one, the primary instead of the November. Because now they'll know where their new precinct is. We showed them the sheet, we showed them, hey, you used to have twenty seventeen, you have fifteen, this is where you go now. And this is permanent. So that worked out well. I'm done until calm.
You can do announcements.
Okay, announcements. Okay, we will have, um, the E Course Creek Commission. Uh, meeting on the twenty seventh, so you're getting a little notice ahead, but there will be a slight change again on the twenty eighth. I haven't heard from our president of the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association today yet. She's working on a location. But we will be having this month's meeting, will probably be at Annapolis in the theaters, what we're trying to get. Because we expect a crowd. We will be having all the people who are running for council and the people who are running for treasurer as our meeting attendees. So if you want to know who these people are and you want to ask them questions, that's the time to come. It'll be seven o'clock on the twenty eighth and it'll probably be at Annapolis. I'll confirm in our next meeting, August twenty eighth. And we have next month's speaker already, and that will be David Kanesic. He'll be there in September at the regular location at three, 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 five, South Beach Daily. That'll be our time to talk to him about the E Course Creek and anything else we want to know from our county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Constant.
Thank you, Council Chair. Uh, I want to tell the clerk and everyone, the clerk staff, great job on the primary election. Um, and having the precincts consolidated and, uh, I think it, everything went well. Um. Summer's coming to an end. Our children are going back to school. Please, everyone, please drive carefully. Please slow down, or that if you hit a child, uh, you're going to probably be going to jail.
Not probably, you are going to jail.
Please drive carefully.
Any other, any other one else? Seeing none, we'll move it over to announcements from administration. Seeing none of that?
Well, you got, you got another one. Get two more.
Thank you for all the cadews. You know, I could not do that with the awesome staff that I have. I have to acknowledge Georgie Anne, our deputy clerk, Deana Fumant. Um, Sally, who's right there in the front, and of course Kathy Birchfield for coming back and helping us out. Our back room, which we can't be done, can't make it happen without them. Our election day workers, which we have some in our room, maybe raise your hand. Thank you. And, well, where did Nancy go? She left too. Well, anyway, she's Nancy as well, our A V workers. Um, our D P W, it takes a lot of people to make this work, uh, the police department. Um, the hosts for our, um, polling locations, which include the, our library, both of our libraries. As well as our Parks and Rec, Eaton, Berwyn, and Canfield. And then of course. Um, the only three polling locations that are outside of our building, which is the Michael Berry Center, Dearborn Public Schools. Um, Crestwood School District, Riverside Middle School, and Annapolis, which all of the voters are at Annapolis High School right now. Um, I'd like to thank the four candidates who were on the ballot for the August primary. It takes a lot, it's not an easy task and sometimes, a lot of times you're taken away from your family. It takes a lot, it's not an easy task and sometimes, a lot of times you're taken away from your family. And, um, I appreciate you as a resident for doing that. Congrats to the two highest candidates. That will move on to the November ballot for the mayor as well as, um. City Clerk, Treasurer, and four council seats will be on there. Um, as you mentioned, the consolidation and relocation. I do want to let you know that, um. Postcards did go out to every single resident household in, in. The city as well as new voter ID cards with the polling locations, the new precinct numbers on there. Um, in addition, we did put notices up on the old locations in, as well as sandwich boards. Uh, we did have a seventeen, seventeen point twenty-four percent, um, turnout. We can do better than that. And, um. I think that's it. I can't do it. We can't do it with, without everybody, without the whole team, so. You're all appreciated. Oh, and the receiving board too. We had the receiving board, which was right in here, which worked out real, very well. And I was out of the building at ten to twelve. That's awesome.
Yeah.
Of course, we had to, oh, one last thing. I had mentioned about, um, a couple meetings ago, I can't even quite remember. But when, um, we receive an absentee ballot, it has to be signed and that signature has to be verified through the qualified voter file. Uh, if it's not signed or if it's, um, a, a signature match, it doesn't match. We do notify, we reject that in the system. And we give the reason why it was rejected. The voter is then notified, um, Deputy Clerk Fumont. Calls every one of them and tells them why their ballot was rejected. They also are either emailed or a letter goes out to them. They have up until three days after the election to cure that signature. So on Monday I took one ballot down, cause after the election and then the Wayne County Canvas will count that. So that was new with Prop Two. And, um, just wanted you to know. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Have to give us good news like first.
Yeah, you're, I got good news, you're good. I just usually encourage come and just give a couple DPW updates. Um, start water and sewer, uh, right now the team, fortunately, we do have one or two new hires that seem to be working out pretty well. This is last month, three to four water main taps, eleven main breaks, repaired four gate. Structures and gate valves, five sewer backups and, uh, many area repairs. We are still getting a handful of calls. I know there's a lot of areas that still need water main break repairs. If you have a specific address, call the office. More often than not, there's a specific reason why one may be delayed, whether it be concrete issues. Other engineering project issues, utility problems. If you do have a concern though, call the office. We continue to try to get our supervisors out to prioritize when and where to make necessary repairs. The other two updates with water, our, uh, meter changeout program is about just over forty percent of the way through its entirety. Um, we had a meeting on Thursday, which I don't think I forwarded the council the update yet. It takes them a little while to give me at least the spreadsheet as to when and where we are in the city. Again, I kind of encourage everybody to do that. I know historically the city's had a little difficulty with, uh, just timeliness of bills, accuracy of bills. Meter related issues. This is one of the steps to fix that. So, we are making progress. And I guess if you look at the two year cycle, we're at forty some percent now. We've been. What, eight months into it? So we are on schedule with that. Um, be patient. Right now, the utility billing office currently, a lot of times only has one employee in there right now. We have, uh, like I said, traditionally there's three in there right now and just due to health, family, time off. A lot of times there's only one individual in there, so just be aware of that. When you do come in or have questions, it may take a little while to get to you. Highway related, uh, we did spend almost two hundred and forty, actually we spent exactly two hundred and forty-four labor hours. Cold patching this last month, only fifty-six hours of street sweeping, but I do encourage everybody to. I was actually presently supplies when I drove through some areas of the city. Garbage cans are getting put up on the extensions. I noticed a handful of streets where there were no cars. It's not, doesn't mean every single time a street sweeper is gonna come by, but we need that to actually occur for us to get efficient doing it. Um, a lot of it depends on workforce at the time and what tasks we have when, but. Thank you for that. That's a positive. I did notice that there's been a little bit of action on it. Uh, we did spend most of our time this last month, the highway department, seven hundred and fifty-four hours. Of just street tree trimming, ground trimming. Uh, we do have a tree truck that hopefully will be back in another week. I know a lot of residents have called. Frustrated with tree limbs, um. That's one of our next primary focuses that we're trying to figure out a way to purchase our second tree truck so that we can get. Um, either an increase in contractual services for tree service work. Or another tree truck and continuing to increase the workforce to be able to get to these in a little more timely manner. But right now, I mean, you got a city functioning similar to just one vector, one tree truck. That's a little bit aged. It's got to stay certified, it's got to stay hydraulically viable for you to get up and cut these trees down, but. We did spend a decent amount of time doing tree str- trimming. So if you do have concerns, still call the office. There are lists circulating, there are maps available if any resident wants to come down. See exactly where the crews are at and where they've been throughout the week. I try to, we're trying to digitize a little bit and communicate that a little bit more to the public in the council, but. It's still there and available for anyone. Last item like council kind of dresses, clean as many catch basins as you can if they're in front of your house. It really does make a difference when it rains. We get these pop-up storms that'll drop. I don't know, rain seems like a whole bunch of it in a half hour. Uh, catch basins do make a difference if you can get them cleaned out, at least stop the street from flooding immediately. That's it. Thank you.
Director Nancy.
Yeah.
Recently I received an email.
Mic's not on.
Sorry. Director Nancy, I recently received an email, uh, from an employee from DPW talking to me about the concerns. That are happening with the mist trash. And so I said to this individual, end me to all those emails every time it comes through. I actually want to be removed, I swear.
We, it's like, yes.
It's like every three minutes I get an email. And it's like every three minutes I'm looking at my phone all, you know, and, and it's like, it's.
All the time.
We're spending our time. Constantly, I, I kid you guys not, every single day I receive forty, fifty emails. Forty, fifty emails, just talking about mist trash, this address, mist trash. So if we're spending time all day just putting, taking the calls, I can only imagine why our lines are always busy.
Yeah.
You know?
So we've been in, uh, with priority waste. I mean, it's, it's, they're large contracts to deal with. And, uh, a lot of discussions you gotta get have, but there is a lot more action even just from that awareness of coming to a handful of elected officials that. Almost immediately told us to not copy them on emails, so.
Yeah, because you know what? It's documenting this and, and I.
It's making a difference, so hopefully we're gonna get a little bit more response from priority waste to the many residents that might be having issues. It's, it's getting addressed as quickly and effectively as possible where you set up some processes.
Are we, are we gonna hold them responsible? Are we gonna find them like, like other cities have done?
Yeah, it's in our contract to withhold payments for specific addresses, so.
Yeah, well, not specific addresses. I mean, look, nobody wants to get their, get their, you know, next bill held back or, or keep twenty percent next time. Because I'm gonna tell you right now, I would like, I'd like you to CC me on this email, maybe have Roger, maybe, or even Rogic or whomever I can get. A clerk, somebody, I'll even do it. Hey, listen, if this continues on, we're, we're holding back a twenty percent, we're not paying you that twenty percent.
Yeah.
It's not fair. Like, you, you have to hold people accountable. I don't care about relationships when it comes to this. Then on the day of city services are failing, what are we doing?
Yeah.
Look, and I'm gonna tell you, this falls on you. This, as of right now, you've been put on notice.
Fair enough.
And, and people are, people are upset. Well, I can't keep saying, well, Director Nancy is working on it, Director Nancy is working on it. It's gonna fall on you.
That's fine.
So, we, we, we need to make sure that we're holding them accountable. I'd like you to send out an email and say, hey. Today's city council meeting, this was discussed, you can even say, mo be doon, I don't care. And you could say, you know, if you guys continue this, we're gonna hold the twenty percent of fine and we're not gonna give you that twenty percent of cost back. If they want to. Their, their contract's up in one year.
Can even CC us on that email.
Yeah, that's fine. We're all on the same page here, we're trying to look out for waste.
In, in reference to that, they were a day late, uh, in my neighborhood, um, the recycle, they came on Saturday instead of.
Councilwoman, forty emails a day and that's me lying, that's my, that's my playing.
I know, but can't, can't we refer them to priority and take some of it off of John's back or did we?
No, we've been trying that. So we're looking at other options, even between Madi and the Comptroller's Office, looking at finance and figuring out a way to. And I have. Cause it, to, right, I'm a handful of, don't even pay attention to it in the event they're in an area that seems to get picked up regularly and not have any issues. But there are areas of the city that are repeatedly having problems, so.
I have one thing about the tree trimming too. I had a gentleman complained that, uh, back in April and May, you guys trimmed his tree. But when he called to find out about this stump, he was told there was no money. And he wants to do his landscaping, he wants to know when they're gonna come.
There are stumps going around and there's contract services that we gotta stay within budget, so.
I'll give the guy's name and number.
We'll address as best we can.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Nancy. Yeah, I think I had a resident who comes from me that just told me, I think there's two, two stumps, like, most few years, he's on university.
This one isn't that, no, this different guy.
How you doing, sir? Uh, I want to thank, uh, you guys for getting us that extra person. Um, HR got the testing done, got the oral boards done, um, and we've got a list established. First two people on the list have already accepted. The third person had till today to give us their answer. If not, we're going to the next person on the list. We're hoping to have everybody on board in the next two weeks. I want to thank the HR department, the Civil Service Board, um, like I said, did a great job. Got us through quickly and got us a list so we can start hiring and getting these people on the road. Um, also, please, when you cut your grass, the back grass needs to be cut as well. We're getting more complaints, people are just cutting the front grass and not cutting the backyards. And it's gotta stop. Do both, front and back, clean up when you're done and, uh, that's it.
Councilor, I'm sorry. Yeah, so Director, you mentioned the backyard, because I've been getting a lot of complaints too about, uh, neighbors calling, not neighbors, I mean, neighbors to those properties calling me. I mean, what can we do about that? I mean, they, I know that inspectors cannot go in the backyard.
Well, if we can see it from the road, we're giving them correction reminders, seven days. On the eighth day, if it's not cut, we're sending our, uh, artistic out and they're cutting it. Like I said, we tell people, you have to.
They can go in the backyard and cut it?
If we can see it and we can give them a seven day correction reminder, yes, they can go back in the backyard and cut it. Yes.
I, I gotta say, Director, um. Dearborn Heights is, is lucky to have our artist department, but more specifically Mr. Abbott back there. Kevin Abbott is somebody that really, uh, he rocks, man. This guy, there's never been a time where I haven't picked up the phone and called Mr. Abbott, can you take a look at this? And, and then I didn't get a message back from residents saying, wow, that was fast. And thank you so much for delivering.
Yep.
And, 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 and then he follows up with me in a couple of days and says, hey, I just want you to know, one, two, three, four, five, when the resident had already told me.
Yeah.
He doesn't know that the resident had already told me. Uh, and so round of applause to Kevin Abbott.
And that, Councilor Chair, do I have the same experience?
I swear, I think there was one day I gave him like eight addresses. I had like eight calls and I said, I don't know. Kevin, here, can you take a look at these eight? And, and I think it was like at five PM, off work. He went by, took a look at all the properties and said, I'll deal with them in the morning. So I mean, this is somebody that I think definitely needs to be recognized, I, I mean.
Oh, yes, so, my staff is hardworking, like I said, they're understaffed and they're all getting twelve, fourteen, sixteen extra runs every day. We're, uh, picking up for the ones that left. There's, we're still cleaning up their stuff. So like I said, our staff is really working hard. Kevin's a hard worker, like I said, they all work.
All work, all great.
I mean.
All great.
Yep.
Uh, but I have to definitely give an extra salute to.
Oh, yes, definitely. Like I said, I give, I give these guys, uh, stuff to do and I get back right away. It's done, it's handled, so.
Director, and, and, and I, please, I don't want you to think I'm insulting you in any way. I'm just, for my own knowledge. You as a director drive around and also should take it to do the work as well, are you doing?
When I'm out, like I said, I go to City Hall every day. I go to South End, drive around down there if I find things. I get, uh, either to the guys or I do it myself. I go to the North End. I'm out usually for an hour and a half, two hours every day. When I go out to City Hall to handle things, yes.
Yeah, you know, I have another question, kind of like. The police department has some type of reserves. Can we build a reserve unit that doesn't ultimately issue tickets? But can drive around, or volunteers, let's just say, I don't even call them reserves. That can drive around right down in it, like I had Daniel Vanegas who drives, rides her bike. And we tell her, write these addresses down, hand it over to the director and that we, you know, no, she's riding her bike. All she sees is a house of blight. We're not telling her, go knock on the person's door, issue an citation. Can, can they do that and, and issue that information to you?
They can, I mean, but any, anybody can do that. I mean, if anybody sees them, we, we, we.
They can do it through the app too.
Yeah, through the app, you have C click fix. So we say, people, get us the information, cause we can't see everything. Like I said, we're shorthanded. And as soon as we get it, we send these guys right out there. Like I said, if you guys contact us, we send someone out right away. So we make sure this is handled.
Do, do, and, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud. Do we have districts when it comes to, like, you know. This sub, this sub right here is gonna be working under Kevin. This one's gonna be working under, uh, Mr. Steerbunker. Do we have that currently?
Yeah, right.
Cause I know right now, like, certain people are only in part of, like, the business district, right? Like, if you're, if this one's in charge of businesses, but he's in somebody else's district. You might have some type of clash. Well, why don't you have one designated person that runs this, this business area and, and this area? This business area and this.
Because the businesses are too much, or you have business licenses, you have the grease traps you have to worry about. Um, so like I said, they're constantly calling business owners and things like that. We have everybody in a district right now. Kevin's got half the South End, I got a part-timer with the other half the South End. And basically, the North End, we got it split in half. I mean, so like I said, once we get these new people on board, the South End's gonna be split up into three districts instead of two. So it makes them smaller, they can handle them faster. North in the same way, it'll be split up into three districts again and they'll be able to handle it. Because it won't be as big. Right now, like I said, we're so shorthanded. I mean, our part-timers are killing it right now because. You know, they're filling in for full-time positions, basically. These guys that were, you know, supposed to grasp, they're doing everything right now.
Thank you.
So, we're keeping them busy.
Sorry for all the questions.
Oh, no, no problem, it's all right.
Thank you.
And if you guys see anything, please call.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Thank you. We'll take it over to, uh, I'm gonna go from Nicole, cause she works for the city. So I would like to hear from Nicole. As in, uh, I don't know, she's speaking as a resident or as a city employee?
Um, I guess I could do either or, it doesn't matter. Nicole Probe, Academy Street, Dearborn Heights. Thank you for bringing it up. I do apologize to you for bombarding you with all of those emails. But I just wanted you to see what we deal with on a daily basis. And I've only been in that particular department since the beginning of twenty twenty-three and it's just progressively gotten worse. And everybody watches the news. We're not the only community experiencing issues with priority waste. So it's not just a Dearborn Heights issue, it's a whole Southeast Michigan issue with priority waste. Um, I did get a copy of the contract from Lynn. I did provide that to John. Unfortunately, their contract is through twenty twenty-seven. So something needs to be done about finding them. John and I have talked about maintaining a list from all the emails that we do send. Um, so we're gonna try that. There is documented in that, uh, like how much we can deduct per address, per missed pickup. So I, I just want to apologize for all of that. Sorry, John. If you need to write me up for being feisty and outspoken, by all means, go ahead, be my first one, so I'm not worried about it. But no, it's just something that everybody needs to be aware of. And I'd also like to throw out there that these trucks are equipped with cameras and GPS. A front camera and a rear camera. When we do send these missed pickup notices over, they do pull the cameras. I would advise residents, how do I put this nicely, not to fib about not having your trash out in time. Or not having a vehicle parked out in front, because the video cameras will show that. So just throwing that out there as well.
And Nicole, they, they sent us a couple where you said that we missed the trash pickup and they said, no, the trash wasn't out.
Correct.
The car blocking the trash bin, so they couldn't take it.
That is correct. And we do call the resident back and we do notify them with that information. They're not happy, of course, but at that point, without any enforcement on the vehicles that are parked in the street during trash pickup. We're kind of in a catch twenty-two and there's not much we can do about that.
Thank you.
But have a good night.
Councilor Chair, I suggest an email that's coming from Director Nancy, maybe it should be, uh, drafted by Mr. Farina and maybe come. Come from the, from you, sir.
Yes.
The priority.
Yes.
Please. Thank you.
Okay, let's take it over to, uh, the residents. Any man, please state your name, the city resident, the street that you live on.
Don't start my time. This afternoon, um, Whitefield Street. So first I'd like to thank Lynn because I don't think anybody, if you don't know Lynn. You won't know that she's somebody who does her job and does it. Like, she's such a perfectionist and she will still go home and not sleep worried that she didn't. Do something or that she missed something, so.
Specialist.
She cares about the community, she cares about the city, she cares about her job, and she definitely has a great team as well. I really came up here, this is the second time that I've had to come up here to address misinformation by Mr. Farina. Um, the school district has never signed a contract with the city.
Presented.
Or presented a contract. We, as a board, have never even been presented a contract. We have received. Our, our administration has done an amazing job with informing the resident, with informing the board. On all communication between anybody in the city, the attorneys, the whoever they've spoken to. We receive updates and emails, sometimes as after, excuse me, sometimes as soon as it's happened. Or in a weekly update, we receive, just for anybody who's interested, feel free to FOIA that information. It's all there. All communication. You can receive the communication between the city, the district. I'm, I'm, I'm assuming as well, the attorneys, I mean, I, I'm, whatever information you would like, it's there and it's available.
May I respond?
I'm not done talking. Yeah, thank you. But we do not have a signed contract. We have never signed a contract. We have stated multiple times that we cannot sign anything. Because there's never been an approval from the council or the administration to sign anything. There, we, we can't move forward. We've had discussions, of course we've had discussions, but I don't appreciate. I've been, i- if you could tell me.
Oh, absolutely.
When I'm speaking, if you could tell me when and what date the board, Crestwood School District. Approved, as you stated, we approved a contract. Approved, as you stated, we approved a contract. You stated we approved a contract.
Why not just clarify before you, before you go further?
Hold on.
Your, your board, council chair?
Please.
She wasn't finished.
Doesn't have.
He's going to the church.
He asked me a question.
Please, thank you. Yeah, Councilor, your board had a vote last meeting. I watched, I watched it. There was a resolution passed to approve a contract. From a company, didn't say you signed it.
He has no.
I'm not, I haven't finished. Okay, can I finish?
Run of order.
Axiom, which was brought up by one of your board members, was challenged because that's a cert, a contract you used and a company used. To look at all your buildings contract. Axiom is a service and your, and, and Mr. Dr. Solomon said, Axiom is a service contract. So there's no RFP. That was done for that company to come in. Axiom picked a company after they did a bid. That company was, I think the contract was for 270, I'm guessing, from memory, 279,000 dollars. They were supposed to do two other Crestwood buildings and the contract that was talked about was to do the entire parking lot. Go back over your meeting and I watched it on video. And I can present it to the council, your, your, your chairman. I haven't finished yet, ma'am.
Actually.
Ma'am, I haven't finished.
My time. I'd like to finish my time. I'd, I'd rather.
Whatever. You don't want to listen to what I'm saying.
Know what you're going.
I just looked at the video and you guys approved that company.
Riverside's parking lot. It has nothing to do with Warren Valley. We approved Riverside's parking lot. Just the area that is in front of Riverside Middle School. Because we did not get, have anything. Between the city and the school district, we approved to complete repaving Riverside's parking.
And in fact, at that meeting, the contract that was negotiated for Warren Valley co, uh, parking lot. Which mentioned that A and I, um, sorry, Al's Asphalt, I think that's the company mentioned in it. That did a bid on May 21st of 2025 that was being put forward was, oh, well, we didn't agree on that contract. We didn't sign that contract. The contract was still negotiated. Somebody negotiated the contract. Somebody put it together. Nobody signed it. You're right. But it was negotiated. That was discussed at that meeting also. So if I'm mistaken about Riverside, that's what I thought. It was for the whole Warren Valley goal. That's what I was thinking. So.
Counselor Chair, I just want to interrupt. I'm sorry, Mr. Noon, just for the record, the contract from, uh, the, the, the bid from Al's asphalt. Came through, um, Matt Shank, Mr. Esau.
No, it did not. That's.
You wind up on it. That's who we.
Not correct because I talked to Matt Shank.
Mr. Esau.
Hey, I know. I talked to the lawyer. Okay, guys, please put a border.
Put a border.
Roger. These guys, let's all calm down. We've had a good meeting. Settle down.
Hey.
Please settle down. 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 Mr. Deep. Mr. Deep, me and you had this conversation. Okay? Who did El's contract come from?
Wasn't a contract, was it?
Who's the?
He doesn't know anything about. We didn't know anything.
Mr. Fred, please, man, like I'm just, I, I, I'm not speaking with you. Please, I'm asking you respectfully. Can you please?
I am.
Can you, can you, can you follow order?
I thought you looked at me.
Please, no, I spoke to Mr. Deep.
I thought you were looking at me. I'm, I'm, I misspoke.
Me and Mr. Deep spoke. I said, Mr. Deep, this did not come from the city. He said, I know, I know, I know it didn't. This came from Mr. Esau. By the way, and, and you don't have to look at him that way to try to get your approval.
I'm going to tell you exactly. I got the, I got the letter from the lawyers. I got the email from the lawyer following the contract you negotiated.
Please.
Without us, sir, sir.
I wish you would just listen and follow order.
I wish you would listen also. That would be so great, right? Both of us listen to each other. Right?
Roger.
I wouldn't entertain. I wouldn't entertain him.
Huh?
Yeah. Mr. Deep. So, so the only, uh.
Me and you had this conversation, guys.
Yeah. The only Al's asphalt bid I received is part of what we put out for bid, what we put out for bid. I'm not aware, I've heard a lot of rumors, 400, 200, but actual bids, I wasn't aware of what the specs were. So what the numbers were, but it's rumors. Now, the bid that we received, official bid was part of the, um, um, what we put out to bid. Mr. Deep, me and you spoke.
Mr. Deep, Mr. Esau's, the estimate Mr. Esau provided the city and the council. You did not get a copy of that?
No, sir. No, never. No, I, I, he, I did, I hear about it, but I never saw an actual, no. Yeah. Never did. You know who El, who El's is for? Was it not from Mr. Esau? Did you not know that? Right now you're telling me you didn't know that? Yes, no, I knew he was approaching, but I never saw that. But you knew it came from Mr. Esau, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Layover, correct.
Pardon me?
And it was for the layover.
And it was going to fix the curves. We talked about it. Mr. Esau was here. Wasn't, I never saw the actual bid. It was, it was a number. But you knew it was from Mr. Esau, correct? Yes. Thank you. That's all we needed.
Okay.
The, the answer, they just basically debunked what.
No, it doesn't, sir. Counselor Chair, it does not.
Thank you.
It's a, it's made in a contract.
Can I clarify?
Whole group.
Regardless.
Didn't say that how it verifies what you're saying.
If. If Mr. Farina actually did in fact watch our meeting, he would see that it was T and M that was granted, was awarded the contract. To complete just Riverside's parking lot. And it was stated that nothing. We have not moved forward and most likely will not be moving forward unless, it won't happen this year regardless. There's no way we can complete the, the parking lot for Warren Valley. So. Again, if you did in fact watch it, I, and if anybody here would like to see, I will personally show you the con, the, um, the vote. Excuse me. What's wrong with me? I will personally show you where it was on our agenda, that it was T and M. Um, and it was not at whoever he was claiming it was. And I can get you the date of our last meeting if you'd like to go back and watch our meeting. Where we voted and where it was all discussed. But I don't appreciate, and it's funny because it's ironic, not one single board member, actually, I'm sorry. Only one board member had this contract that you magically, I'm just going to wonder, going to, well, I wonder where she got it from. It's, it's all making sense.
Okay.
One of your time is also they sent.
Contract that he's claiming that nobody received, nothing was signed. Um, but surprisingly, somebody had it to present it to even the superintendent. Um, but you know, it's. It, it, it's pointless. It's pointless. There was, we've been given the runaround for this parking lot like I have never seen before. First it was. One excuse after the other. Then it became there was the, the liquor license. And then it, there's just been so many reasons why we can't move forward. And all this was, was for the safety of our children. And at the end of the day, I'm going to say, how many more days and hours do we have left? And we won't have to worry about this problem any longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Man. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You have three minutes.
It's okay. Take your time.
Renee Myrna, Annapolis Street, Dearborn Heights. And, um. Phew, while waiting for this meeting to, to end, I'm on like 17%. 17% of my notes and I better get there real quick. Okay, a couple of things. Um, as far as, uh, what just went on around here. Phew. Man, I'm all stressed out now. But here's the thing. Whenever there's a disagreement, it just means that. Stuff needs to be sat down and present what you have, present what you have, and then figure out where the holes are. It doesn't need to be argued. It doesn't need to be this animosity or this hatred or you have it in for the city or whatever. Whatever's going on behind the scenes because, because baggage is being brought from both ends of past issues that probably happened. But don't bring it into the, every new interaction. You know, if he misspoke, then sit down with him and, and have a conversation, compare notes and follow the trail. Follow the trail. There's a paper trail. Somewhere there's a paper trail where it's going to come out with the truth. FOIA. Okay. But here's the thing, it's not worth it to argue with people back and forth. Because it just makes us look bad and you don't get anywhere. You just get tighter in your position. Be more open to, you know, to figuring, figuring what the other person has. That, that aside, um, I want to say Lynn Senia. Everybody mentioned how, what a great job she's done and how good she is at it and all that. I think one point that they missed is the fact that she does it with a smile. You can't be mad at this woman. You can't even like you, if anybody has any complaints, just look at her face while you're complaining. You can't complain anymore. Because she, she just takes it all with a smile and a good attitude. So thank you for that, you know? I would like to be like you, but as sorry, I'm too transparent. My face is like, will reflect what you're doing to me. Uh, the other thing is, um. I have to wait for Council Chair to come for, for the, for the other one. So I might have to extend my minute when he gets back. But, uh, thank you for approving the education for the treasurer. Let me tell you something. At work, you know, I work in a financial industry and they're, okay, I'm old. I don't do software. I don't do techie. I learned from an eight year old how to go on, you know, in Windows 95, okay? And it's point and click. And if there's not a picture, I don't know how to do it. But. We got new programs that came out and I had been stressed out to the max. And finally I came up, I went to the, our awesome library and came up with a book called The War at Work. I saw it on Friday. I picked it up. I read it in two days. I mean, the thing is, you know, it's an easy read. I recommend it to everybody. And it talks about the difference between of the systems that are happening now. We were all raised with the hierarchy system, you know, the boss. That is one. So it's a hierarchy system, but it's moving, it, the, the world is moving to a networking system. To where there is no hierarchy anymore. I'm the boss. I'm the, well, yeah, there's still going to be bosses and stuff, but. It's a networking and you'll find more and more people are getting involved in city council stuff. Maybe even in the background, more, more, more people are calling the city hall or whatever. It's a network. It was a great eye opener on technology and. Because I took the training, just, um, somebody walked me through piece by piece, singular by, with me. On Monday, I was able to save my boss a lot of.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I got it. I got it. Thank you very much. I, I, believe me, there's no hatred here. Everybody is just, they have so much love to the city and they're so passionate about the city. That's all. Any more in person? Please state your name, the street you live on and the city you live in.
Trabkowski Columbia Street. Um, discussion was brought up about the Airbnb's and the enforcement. Um, but nobody brought up the police department doing any of the enforcing. So if the chief is still available or online.
He's not.
Chief is not.
I think so.
Okay.
No. Is that online?
No.
Okay. Consider that's where most of the enforcement would probably come from.
Probably they're still working on it, but we'll see. I mean, if you have any, you have a question to the chief, you can just write it down. We can send it to him.
Alright. Okay. I'll, uh, leave that to Angela since she's. After this one. But, uh, that, you know, has, hasn't been brought up, but the police department should be, you know, the ones, uh, involved. On clearing the streets and stuff like that. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any more in person? Please state your name, the street you live on and the city you live in.
Margaret Mayfair Street. Um, it's to go back to the Airbnb. Is there any way that we can enforce? Like how do we, how are we currently enforcing the resident, the renters in our city? That are not registered as renters? Because that could be a problem with the Airbnbs as well. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. And Mike, please state your name, the city you reside in, the city you live in.
Mike Blackburn, Arnold Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, I'm the concrete contractor. Um, I don't know if it was Angel Cement or A and G that poured the cement in front of my house. But my new cement is higher than my neighbor's old cement. And for the past two years, water still does not run uphill. Um, my curb line looks like somebody drank 18 beers and tried to draw a line. If I was a city, I'd be embarrassed to pay, pay for that, but, um, whatever. It's not, 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 not going to change. It's not going to get fixed. Um, as far as cars being parked on the street on trash day. Tomorrow's my trash day. I can look out my front window and I can say, at 50 bucks a pop, I can say, there's $500. Why do we not have somebody out writing tickets? First, we were going to train the cadets to write tickets. If you have to pay one officer four hours overtime to write tickets, you can. I know it's, it's not supposed to be a money grab. It's supposed to be corrective behavior. But you can make a thousand, $2,000 a day with these people that don't park, that park their cars in front of the streets. And it's an issue, i- issue with trash can cut down on people. Um, say my trash was mish, when, when, when there was a car, it's all, it's a snow, snowball thing. Why are we not writing tickets? Why do, why does Dearborn Heights not do anything? We don't do anything. We talk about it. We don't do shit. When are we going to do something about anything? Just one thing. Let's start one thing. One thing small. Let's do one thing. We don't do nothing. We talk. DPW spent thousands of dollars to put signs up on every street for no parking, for trash. Man hours spent, hundreds of man hours spent, thousands of dollars on signs. And nobody cares because we don't do anything. And they don't care because they know we don't do anything. And nothing's changing around here. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? None. We're going to move it over to, we're going to move it over to Zoom. So we have Tim.
Good evening. Once again, I, I agree with Mike, what he said about the cars being parked on the streets. I had a neighbor last week, somebody else parked in front of his house and they didn't pick up his trash. He come over and asked me, what do I do? I says, call the city. I says, it's not, it's not priorities fault. They couldn't get to it because there was a car parked in front of his house. His, his can was on the grassy strip. On the street, you know, like where it should be, but they couldn't get it. When you look down our street on Fridays, it don't look like any other day. There's cars parked all over the place.
Thank you.
So, I mean, it's, 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 it's not right. And the street cleaners can't come down because they got a zigzag around cars. Then if they do move them off the streets, they put them across either on the front lawn or they park across sidewalks. So you can't go to anywhere. So, yeah, same old thing. It's renters. It's not the people that live there. They're renters that are causing the problems.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Tim.
Good evening.
Have a good, great night. Thank you so much. God bless you. Anyone else in the audience or anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Sal. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The aye, can it, motion carried.
Pardon.